It's 6:30 PM. Before we have an approval of the agenda, I have two suggestions. Under K, complete streets bid update. I'd like to see us move that to just before E. And under L, budget meeting schedule. That's also on the agenda for Friday. So I was thinking we could scratch it tonight and in the interest of time and take it up for Friday's meeting.
Make a motion to approve the amended agenda.
I'll second that, Rosemary Meister.
Okay, all in favor. Leo Jansen, yes?
Rosemary, yes.
Bill Johnson, yes.
Okay. So do we have anybody that wants to address the board on anything that's not on the agenda tonight? Okay, seeing nothing. We will move on to town administrators update.
Chairman, thank you. So. We had a marijuana review team meeting last week and we approved the application for Eddie's Flowers. That's a retail and distribution location out on 119. So the next step of that is myself working with them to get a host community agreement. And then submit that to the Board of Selectmen for approval. And then after that, they would complete their process with the state to go forward. Also just want to update you. So we had a DPW feasibility study meeting. The other week with the state and. Some other people that were helping out that they subcontracted with. And there's still more work needed. I thought it was interesting what their initial plans were for that site. But there's still a lot of work to go before we. Anything, but I did want to let you know that we're having meetings and that was going forward. And the third item I've had is I spoke about a little while ago was the intermunicipal agreement with Westminster. For the veterans agent. So I talked to Mark Hawk and. They came back with a $8,000 a year for three years. And that's where we are now. So they kind of level funded it for the next three years. I thought that was fair. So. If it's okay with you, I can sign that. Or I know when the last one, the chairman signed it. I'm not sure why the chairman signed it last time. But. Either way. I can sign it or Leo, you can sign it. It's up to you.
Do we need to make a motion to accept that? Or is that all you, Brian?
I think it's all me. I didn't see anything in the minutes or anything from last time. That's why I'm kind of curious why the chairman signed it. And not the town administrator, but I didn't see any votes. I didn't see anything in the minutes regarding that.
But should we do that, though?
We can do that just to cover ourselves. I'm for that.
Leo, you okay with that?
Yep. In fact, I was going to ask for a motion to authorize Brian to sign it.
All right, I'll give you a motion. For the town administrator to sign the intermunicipal agreement with Westminster for a veterans agent for the next three years.
I'll second that.
All in favor. Leo Jansen, yes?
Rosemary Meister, yes.
Bill Johnson, yes.
Thank you very much. So I just want to update you. Motor vehicle excise was due on the 15th of March. So I'm a little concerned that we're at 85% of the collection rate. But I know the demands haven't gone out and that normally gets a fair amount of people in. But I thought we'd be close to 95%. So not that it's a real large number, but it is a concern to me as is it a trend going forward? Well, that being the case, we still have a pretty much a spending freeze on. Go forward, other than pretty much necessity. I will say a promising note is the real estate collections have come in a little better than expected. So what we lost on one, we seem to have gained on the other. But until that fourth quarter real estate, which is due May 3rd this year. I'm not going to be too comfortable with anything. But real estate of being a bigger number, that being up is promising. And thing we're currently working on, we're still trying to get an auction at the end, mid to end of May. We've got a list ready. We've got the assessors information on it. We've got to get some opinions on a few of the pieces and then we'll put that out. For the public and to get an auction moving on that. So there'll be more updates on that. At every Board of Select meeting up until the time where we have the auction. And the last thing I have, or just I'll have. Chief Plant comments on is we did put the three fire trucks out to bid. And I'll let him fill you in on how those were received. If you want to unmute yourself, Bob, and. Give an update, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, we put the the three trucks out. They're all out of service vehicles. There was an engine, a brush truck and the ladder. The engine, we accepted the bid on at $8,200. The brush truck was again accepted. That was 2,750, I believe. We did hold up on the ladder. The bid was only 2,300 was the high bid. And that coupled with the discussion I had with the FEMA grant coordinator for our region. He said, though it wouldn't stop us from getting the grant, it may delay a check coming because FEMA is going to want to look into the paperwork. On our ownership and the sale, et cetera. So for $2,300, I talked to Brian and the decision was made that we will not accept the bid. Hold on to the ladder truck for a few months, let the grant flush through. And in the meantime, well, maybe we'll get a different batch of bidders for. I know there's a lot of collectors of MAC fire trucks especially. So hopefully we'll. We'll hit one of those towards the end of summer when it goes back up for bid. But right now we're just waiting for the checks to come through and the the new owners are eagerly awaiting to get their their vehicles picked up.
Well, did you mention how much we got for each truck?
Yeah, 82 for the engine and 2750 for the brush truck.
Thank you. So that's all I have for the town administrative update. Anyone have any questions or comments on that?
I just had a quick clarification. So the meeting that you referred to, that was the DPW feasibility study. That's actually the DPW redevelopment site. Okay, so it's it's not a feasibility study. So I just wanted to make that clarification.
Thank you.
There is a thing on the agenda, Brian, for you. Where do we stand? MOU with Gardner, the 101 South and the Brezner Hand Center.
Sure. So I'll take those separately as we go forward. So the Brezner Hand Center, I did reach out to AJ at the Brezner Hand Center. He did reply back. They were. Little tight on money. They had some revenue sources that they were using to get some of the other things completed. He did give me a list of kind of the things that were were done. The tricky part seems to be some of the handicapped accessible things. He is looking for a soft opening Veterans Day in November of this year. So that's promising, but he's got some excavation stuff that's going to be due all back. They're going to remove some of the stumps that were cleared last year. They've got some. They're going to have a dumpster there because they've accumulated some stuff inside the building that they're going to get. They're going to move out. The appliances for the kitchen. Is supposed is going to be installed. There's an industrial grade stove for the kitchen that needs to go in there. They're going to have a townwide yard sale for some additional revenue. And they plan an online auction for some additional revenue. So. You know, they've done a fair amount of things in there for sure. They've made some progress. But obviously there's still a few things they need to do. So I'll be touching base with them as we go forward to make sure they're online and hopefully they're on track for a November opening. Once I'm comfortable with kind of where they are in their status, then I'll look into redoing the lease agreement with them. But I figure let's find out kind of where they're going and how they're going to get there before I start that process. Any questions on the Brezner Hand Center? So on the Gardner MOU, I've reached out to Dana Arnold. And unfortunately, he was away on vacation, but I did reach out to him. We are. We'll be getting together on short shortly and we will be working on this as we go forward. And to get that settled and put behind us. So on the Route 101 South, we're still on for 2025. I did talk to Steve and. Weston and Sampson. And Weston and Sampson and Mass DOT have been planning the next step. And everything seems to be kind of going forward. Some of the holdup seems to be with Mass DOT. Weston and Sampson seems to be giving them information and they're working together. In order to get that. So Mass DOT is updating the schedules. To get everything proposed on that, but we have the funding to get to our piece. So. That should still continue to move forward.
I just have something to add on that. At, you know, Brian knows about this, but at the last MPO meeting. DOT was proposing to push this project to fiscal '26. And I spoke up, told them why I did not think this was a great idea. As and I got support from other members of DOT, which was interesting. And also from the select board member in Lunenburg. I have seen some letters coming in from other municipalities regarding. Other projects on the tip that might be pushed off. And even though it looks like we have the support right now to remain in fiscal year '25. I would suggest that we send a letter. To MRPC. Just reiterating all the stuff that Brian said. And and discussing in the letter that if they continue to push us off. It's just going to cost our town more and more money because engineering costs will continue to rise. And the burden falls on our community. So that's just something I would suggest, whether it come from the TA or. Or the select board, but I think it'd probably be a good idea. The next meeting of the MPO is on the 21st. So ideally, we want to get that to them next week at the latest. And I'd also suggest that someone attend the MJTC meeting, which I think is next week. That's pretty important. Because they, that group was the one that voted to move us to fiscal '26.
So if you're not in the room, they just kind of go right around you.
Sort of.
All right, Bill, anything to add?
A couple of questions. From a design completion perspective. What percentage completion are we on that project now?
Can I answer that?
Please.
Yep. Okay, so the 25% design was complete in April of 2020, which was last year. So they are working, Weston Sampson is working on the 75% design now, which will be completed by summer of this year, 2021. There still needs to be a public hearing on this and they are now doing those. And that is run by Mass DOT and they're now doing those. Obviously via Zoom, so they're not in person anymore. And and that will take place in May of June of this year. So they are on track with this. I don't. I understand what Rosemary is saying, but there's no reason to push us off. We will be, what?
Just to, just to give you a little background, Steve, there are communities that aren't even on the tip. That are at 100% design. And that's, that's the pressure that we're under. You know, you have a community like Harvard that's at 75% and they're looking for a spot on the tip.
Right.
And so we're at a disadvantage when we're only at 25%. So that's what it is. It's like who's whoever's got the money and the funding and they're almost done. You know, they get pushed ahead if if it works in that year's budget. Yeah.
I want to say that's kind of why at the special town meeting, we gave with our money from free cash to come up with the rest of our cost to cover that. So, you know, going forward, you know, we should earmark the money before and not after. It makes it a lot easier.
I mean, they were very happy with the responses that I gave them that both Steve and Brian were giving me via text during the meeting. So I was very appreciative and thankful because I did not know where we were with that. But. So when I told them that we were going to be at 75% this summer, fall at the latest. That, you know, appeased some of the people in Region 3 of DOT and. We got their support to move forward in 2025.
And just to add one thing, if you look on the the website for the state, we, our project is there. And it has all the timelines, it has all the funding on it. So I I'm not quite sure why MPO was doing that, but.
Because they vote on the new schedule.
Right.
Every spring.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's, that's why.
Rosemary, would you like to write that letter and sign it as our grant overseer?
How did I get that job? I'll write that, sure. Yep.
You, you're the most up on it of the three of us.
Okay, I'll do that.
All right. So now we're going to move on to our next item, which is going to be complete streets bid update since we moved that on the agenda. I guess, I don't know, we'll start with you, Brian, and then we'll bring. Where did, where did Bill go?
He's here.
I'm here.
So, thank you. So I did have a conversation with Bill McGrath earlier today. So basically, you know, the the bid came in, we only had one person bid on the project. And their price, you know, their bid was higher than the money we had allotted. So with that, I'll let Bill McGrath from Beta give his comments and input.
Thanks, Brian. Yeah, so like Brian said, we only had one bidder, unfortunately. They were higher than the the grant funding. But they are interested in still doing the job. So we, we've talked to them, we've worked with them. And come up with a. What we think is a recommendation to be able to move forward. And that includes cutting some scope out of the, out of the project to reduce the costs. So what we've looked at is removing the section of sidewalk between School Street and the Father Lacy Center on the west side. Removing the section of sidewalk that we added on down by Family Dental. And also not installing the. Imprint in the crosswalks. So it would just be paint in the crosswalks. And that'll get us down to about $328,700, which is about $6,000 or so less than the grant. And I think as we, if you choose to move forward that way, as we get into it and get into construction, we'll see where the money is. And if we have the opportunity. To add on and maybe can afford the the work down by Family Dental, I think we could do that, but. I don't think we're going to be able to afford. The sidewalk between School Street and the Father Lacy Center. So again, the contractor is. Is willing to to do that, make those types of changes if if that's how the town wants to move forward. I would add, we went back and and looked at the original submission to Mastod for the complete streets. And it actually did not include sidewalk between School Street and the Father Lacy Center. So. In a sense, we're, we're back to. Where it started with the application to Mastod originally.
Can I comment, Bill, on that stretch from School Street to Father Lacy Hall and including the parking lot for Father Lacy Hall?
Yep.
So when we last spoke about the parking lot, that sort of open driveway there, we were going to put that imprinted pavement. To signal that that was actually a sidewalk. Is that something that will still be included in this plan because you're cutting out the imprinted pavement on the crosswalks?
So, so we could still do that in the driveway, even though we're not extending the sidewalk through the driveway. But we still could put the imprint in to at least provide some delineation of the sort of the two sections of the the entrance. I think that will fall within the the money that we have.
Okay, thank you. The other thing is, is I don't know, the last time you looked at the satellite view of Main Street, but I'm looking at it right now. And where we were going to put the sidewalk between Father Lacy Hall and School Street. There are six cars parked right there on the road, which is a no parking zone.
Yep, so I have seen that. I looked at it today, as a matter of fact. So we had no parking signs that we were going to install on that stretch. We can still install those signs, even if we don't have the sidewalk there. And I know that's not a perfect solution, but it at least provides some reinforcement that cars shouldn't be parking there.
Can we add a curb there and then backfill it and have grass? Or even a pretty significant pavement type berm? Because the the problem is, is that the road actually sort of. Looks like there's a little bit of parking there. There's almost a shoulder. It's not really a shoulder. So it gives people the belief that they can park there. So, you know, I know in Ashburnham, a no parking sign is probably ignored most of the time. At least it is in a lot of places in downtown. So if we were to put a curb there, that would be pretty significant. Now they're in the travel lane, right? I don't know if that's possible.
So I, I don't think we could put the granite curb in. I don't think, well, again, I guess what I would say is. Once we get into construction and kind of see where we're at. Actual dollar wise, in the actual quantities that that the contractor is using. You can see if there's, there's money for that. I suspect probably not. There is a asphalt berm there now. Maybe one solution would be to remove the, the white edge line that's there and repaint it closer to the the berm. So it, it doesn't look like a parking lane.
There isn't a white line there. See, that's the point. It just sort of swoops right in. There is no white line. So that's why I was thinking is even if it was an asphalt berm, if we were to push it out, put a more substantial asphalt berm. And then backfill it with dirt and seed it. So it looks like lawn and it lines up with. Where it should be. Because see what happened is obviously Cushing put that there in order to keep people from parking there. Because they were parking on their lawn. But it's not doing a good job, obviously. So. But now that part beyond the berm is the town's responsibility, not Cushing's, I believe. So that's probably why they didn't push it out because putting that berm would be. On the road or where a sidewalk would be. I'm just thinking of a way to really tighten that up and make no excuses for. Parking cars because it's. I can imagine that if you're coming out of School Street or you're rounding that corner down Main Street. And you come upon a number of cars in line to pick up kids at CCD or whatever. And. They're just pulled over the side of the road. That's, that's dangerous.
Yeah, no. Again, I. I think there is somewhat of a, an asphalt berm there now. We could try to improve it. Again, I, I think we have to see where the, the money lies once we get into construction. The other possibility, and again, it's not a physical barrier, but. We could straight and kind of crosshatch in yellow. Maybe a couple of feet away from the the berm. To kind of again reinforce the no parking. Along with the signs. I know it's.
Try and solve the problem, you know, and, you know, I'm extremely disappointed, obviously, that that I love the embossed pavement look. On the crosswalks, I'd love to be able to carry those all the way downtown. It just really dresses it up. It will help attract local businesses. And economic development. So, you know, I would hate to see that go.
What, what I would say is, you know, if, if other funds become available. Nothing that we're doing as part of this project would preclude the the town from going at a, at a later date and doing that work. Maybe as a, a bigger project throughout downtown. But I actually something. The funding and the bids that it's going to work out for this project.
No, I understand. Thank you, Bill.
Can I speak?
Yep, go ahead.
So I think we need to get this project moving forward and then if there are avenues inside with inside the project that we could look at. But if we don't get this project going, we're going to have to give this money back to the state. Because the, this, this, this contractor, we only have one. And if he doesn't, and if we don't sign a contract with him and he doesn't hold this slot, we're going to lose the whole thing. I, I think we need to get it going and then deal with the, the minor things in there that maybe we can deal with later. We're at a critical point with this project right now.
I agree with that.
Bill, you got something you want to ask?
I, Leo, I always have things I want to ask. So let me go at this another way, Brian. What's the likelihood that we can come up with some additional resources to. Augment this project? And and before you answer the question, so. I'm okay with the, with the recommendations are as far as the sidewalk at Father Lacy Hall. I get that. I'm less okay with down in front of the dental building, but I do understand that that wasn't part of the original scope of work either. The thing that from a general perspective that I'm concerned about is that. This is a tremendous opportunity for the town of Ashburnham to really dress up downtown and provide it a much safer environment for pedestrians. And with all the things that we have on our agenda that we need to deal with. In my lifetime, we're never going to come back to this project. So one of the things that's in there was a, a bid alternate for installing the conduit under the sidewalks. And it was a big number. It was around 100 grand. That's not a number that the municipal light company is willing to take on themselves. So I talked to one of the members down there about the prospects of the town picking up half the cost of that. My point is that if we don't do that now, we're never going to do that either. And we won't have the streetlights up there and, you know, we'll, we're, we're cutting corners. I understand, you know, money's short, but if there's any way that we can figure this out, now would be the time to do it.
Well, so in the regular operating budget, I, I don't have those kind of funds. However, advisory has the money. $50,000 from the budget and they have the $75,000 or $72,000 that we moved from economic development. Capital, I think they've got around $350,000 at their disposal. Those are the only two. That I can think of that, that have. A substantial amount of money to grab at this point in time.
And what would your thought be about doing that from one of those sources?
I'm not against it. You know, I think the economic development part, if it's economic developing and stimulating growth in business downtown. I don't, I, I could see that logically. I don't, I, I could see that logically being doing it. I don't see it more of a capital item because it's not a truck or a piece of equipment or something. However, you know, it is a capital need as in road repair. So, um, you know, I'm okay if, if they think it's worthy of that and justifiable.
If, if who does, economic development?
Either, either the advisory board or capital, either one of those two boards. Cause it's their, it's those, their funds that they would have. But I don't have anything that I'm aware of, of a surplus in any of my accounts.
Yeah, no, I, I wasn't expecting that it would come out of the operating budget. That's obviously, um, you've had that on a short leash, leash all year long, and I would expect it to stay that way, and I, I applaud you for doing that. But it, it just seems to me that it's, it's one of those moments where, you know, it'll be nice if we do what Bill is proposing. It'd be really nice if we were able to do the whole thing. And, uh, and, and that like obviously doesn't include the lights, but we'd be positioned that everything would be there, that at a later date, those could be installed. So, tha- that would be, uh, that would be my wish that we would come up with. Well, I don't know, wha- wha- what's, Bill, what's the, uh, what's the value on those stamped concrete, uh, crosswalks? What's, what's a rough number on those?
He's on mute, you're on mute.
I'm sorry about that. Uh, the total value for the, the stamped asphalt was about nineteen thousand dollars. Just under, I think, eighteen thousand seven hundred, I think.
So if, let's, let's call it twenty. So, be, with the half the money on the bid alternate, you're looking at seventy thousand dollars. Um, that it would take for us to move forward with this, assuming, and I, I think the light company is willing to go on the other fifty, so. I'm just throwing it out there, what people think.
I just wanna add that, you know, I agree with Bill that anything farther away from downtown will never be looked at again. I, I, because a grant, we're not gonna go back and apply for a grant to do something that was just done. You know, so, you know, this was a, you know, the, I think the second project on our complete streets prioritization plan. And, you know, I'd love to do the sidewalk in front of Village Pizza and the dental, the dental one is just horrible. And I, I'm, I'm not even a hundred percent certain we were gonna go that far, but we can add that on to the next complete street project, because it just, we just follow it down the street, right? But anything that is north of Pleasance and Lawrence, whatever we choose to get rid of and cut out of this plan, we probably won't ever address it again, because the grant money won't allow us to just nickel and dime it, it'll have to come out of the budget. Uh, whereas, as we move south, down twelve, um, we, we have a number of grant opportunities. You know, we have Mass Works, we have Complete Streets, we have Housing Choice. There's a number of things that we could go after. Um, you know, would we be successful in getting them? I don't know. But they wanna see a segment, not a piece here, a piece there, a piece here, a piece there. They wanna see a chunk. Would you agree with that, Bill?
Yeah, no, I, they don't like to piecemeal things. They, they like to see, I'll call substantial projects, so.
Yeah, so that's just a comment. It's just that it's harder to do, once we start walking away from doing stuff north of, let's say, Father Lacy's Hall, uh, we're probably not gonna address that again. And the lights, I mean, cause Bill, those lights go how far up?
Uh, they go all the way up, well, they don't, they don't go, they go to Father Lacy Hall, and then on the other side of the street, I think they go, uh, up to Cushing Street, if I'm looking at the, the diagram correctly.
Right.
Close to it. And that's, I gotta tell you, those, those in and of themselves are a significant visual impact on downtown. You put the banners on them and, you know, people coming through there, it's gonna say, wow, this, the, you know, people, they, they got something going here. And I just, I don't wanna miss that opportunity. We worked too hard to get, uh, to get to where we are. I, I just don't wanna miss this opportunity.
So another thing I'll add is, you know, I'm working with, um, the consultants on the LRRP grant. We're, we're meeting on Wednesday. They're doing a walk around, but I had to um, c- confirm and okay the study area that they put forward. And right now, the study area of downtown ends at the Community Church and St. Dennis Church, so that's where they see downtown starting. And it extends all the way to Phillips Brook. So they see that as our downtown corridor from a commercial development standpoint. That, again, just a comment.
Money wise, the, uh, economic development money that's presently in the reserve fund, wasn't that gonna be seed money for a planner?
Fifty thousand is for a planner. And then the, uh, money above it is the match for the rail trail feasibility study that we, um, will hear about in June.
So then technically that money is not, not on the table. When, when Brian just cited some sources.
Well, the money above the fifty is not, but the fifty was, it's my understanding, always reserved for a planner, but Bill would know about that, not my, uh.
Well, that, it, there was never actually any money reserved for it. That was one of the things that we had focused on when we put that fund together, that we wanted to have it be a primary goal, that we would get a planner. But we never said it was an absolute must that that money had to go to that. But even if you take that money off the table, because it, it probably should stay closer to it is, uh, you know, with the money in the capital fund, I mean, these are clear infrastructure improvements that we're doing downtown. So, it's not something that we're doing willy-nilly. So, I would think that, you know, that, that money would be available. Uh, we, we can't touch it right now, but we did leave money in free cash that's gonna roll over. Um, so, I, 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 I think the money's there that, uh, we could afford to do something like this. But to Steve and Bill's point, um, if we're gonna do it, we need to pull the trigger now.
No, I get that. I just didn't wanna take money from planner when we've been recently talking about pulling the trigger on a planner.
Yeah, nor do I. I mean, I, if that's, I don't wanna do that either, cause that's obviously another priority for us as well. But, so Brian, let me ask you a, a question here. We, we know we have a couple of potentials to get the money from. How do we do, do we need to specifically identify where the money would come from? If we were to make a motion to expend the extra revenue? Or could we just figure it out as, uh, as time goes on here and the dust starts to settle?
I think you'd have to have the money earmarked for something this size. I mean, you're looking, you're looking at, what, eighty thousand dollars?
Seventy.
Seventy.
May- maybe less, I don't know. I mean, it, it, uh, you know, maybe, maybe you could, you know, take out one of the lights or something and save a couple of bucks. And we'd have to get the, you know, approval or the guarantee from Municipal Light that they, you know, would put up their half of the money, so.
Any money that's in capital's gotta come out of a town meeting vote.
Interestingly enough, we have one of those coming up.
Yep. Which we're gonna be discussing in a little while.
It's gonna be great.
If we're awarding a bid, we don't have the money set aside, what if it doesn't get passed at town meeting?
Uh, that's, it coming out of capital, if it's like stabilization, it's a two-third vote.
The other option is to take it from free cash, that's still there.
Ah, that's what we got you for, to know where those numbers are.
And that's a majority, I believe, so.
Yep, you are correct.
Majority.
That might be the avenue we should look at.
I'm not sure we can wait a month before to sign those contracts. Bill, do you know if, if, if the, uh, the bidder would be interested in doing the addendum work and waiting a month?
Well, I, I, I know that he's interested in doing the work. Um, I would have to have a conversation with him. About how, how that fits into his schedule. You know, and I, I think it's too big to try to award him a contract for a certain amount and then do a change order to that contract for the, for the lighting and the, the conduit. I'm not sure that would work. But I can certainly have a conversation with him about waiting, uh, but to Steve's point, we do need to get the work done to meet the, the schedule for the grant funding, for the complete streets grant funding. Uh, and the sidewalk and curbing work is, is fairly quick. Um, probably three weeks worth of work. Um, the thing, if, if you install the, the light bases, which I agree is a a good idea and the right thing to do and, and do it now, there's a little bit longer lead time on that. So, um, because he has to have those fabricated.
So, Bill, just a clarification, when you say award the base contract and, and you don't think a change order would work because it's too big? Or there's some financial penalties in there for doing a change order? What's the, what's the background there?
No, I, I don't think there's penalties, and I guess it's a, a level of comfort that the, the town has. Um, you know, if, if you award a, a contract for three hundred and thirty-five thousand or um, and then do a, a hundred and twenty thousand dollar change order to that, to that contract, um, some towns are not, not as comfortable with changing the contract by thirty percent or so. But I'm, I'm not aware, um, that it violates any bidding laws or, um, has any kind of financial penalty that goes along with it, but so that, that's my only thought on that.
And the light company would still have to bid for their half, right, Bill, still?
Yeah, so I, I, you know, if, if you're gonna sign a contract with the, the contractor, um, yeah, the light company would still have to come up with, with their piece of the funding.
We, we can work that out through the town. It wouldn't have to be, the, the light company wouldn't have the contract directly with the contractor. We'd do it all through the town.
Yeah, exactly. No, I think you wanna just have the town contract with the contractor for, for whatever the work is gonna be, yeah, I, I agree. You don't wanna have the light company have a separate contract.
I, I'm just not sure when their board or their, their group gets together.
They don't meet till mid-April.
Mid-April, okay. So we'll have to get on their agenda shortly, and their approval, and then our meeting would be after that.
So, Bill, do you wanna speak to them in the meantime and, and see what they say? And then we'll be doing this other stuff on the other end? So that we don't leave this thing hanging, and like Steve says, it goes away if, if we don't act?
Yeah, no, I, I can definitely reach out to them tomorrow and, uh, and see what, um, what kind of a commitment we can get from them and, you know, how quickly we can get that.
Cause with, like, the company I work for, I, I know how these things work. This company gave a bid, if we drag our feet, they're gonna grab something else, cause they wanna have their cash flow coming in.
Exactly, exactly.
I, I agree.
Really need to consider doing the base bid now. You really do.
I, I, I wouldn't risk losing it all.
Exactly, you may. The construction season is in full gear right now, right now. Just so you know.
All right, so let me ask you this question, Bill. So if we if we voted tonight to authorize the changes that you're talking about and, um, you know, gave Brian the authority to move forward with this contract, how much time would we have on the alternate bid if we did it as a change order? How, how, how late can we let the contractor know? And I don't expect you're gonna have an answer for me tonight, but I'd wanna know how, what, what's that absolute deadline to let them know that we wanna move forward with that piece of it? Because I, I don't wanna jeopardize the funding, obviously, either, but I, I just don't wanna walk away from the other piece yet.
Yeah, I, I can have a conversation with the, the contractor about that and how that fits into his schedule. The only caution is, since the, the base bid work, like I say, sidewalk and curbing is gonna go fairly quickly. I don't know how he would feel about keeping a contract open and, and waiting, but I can have that conversation.
No, I, I understand. I mean, I, I guess, yeah, just see what, see what they have to say with that. So, um, then, uh, you know, uh, Leo, if you want a motion, I'll give you a motion.
Okay, I don't think we should be sitting on this, so, go ahead.
All right, so then, um, I would move that the, uh, town authorize the awarding of the contract for three hundred and twenty-eight thousand seven hundred dollars for the complete streets project for downtown.
I'll second that.
All in favor, Leo Jansons, yes?
Rosemary Meisner, yes?
Phil Johnson, yes.
All right.
Thank you, and thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Bill.
Thanks very much.
Now, remember when you're talking to him, Bill, we moved you ahead, so you didn't have to sit here all night.
That, that will give me incentive to, to push him. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, next up is the, uh, gonna be the, approving the location for the annual town meeting. So Brian, you got, you wanna speak on that?
Sure, so we've asked both, um, Oakmont and Briggs, um, for their availability, and both are available on that day. So we'll, I guess we'd leave it up to you guys, uh, where you'd like to have it. Correct, Mary?
Yes.
So I'll, I'll make a motion that we have the annual town meeting at Oakmont Regional High School.
You don't wanna do it at the, uh, Briggs, like we did the last one?
I don't think they've got the, uh, capabilities down there yet that we really need. Uh, you know, there's that PowerPoint that, um, Rosemarie did last year, and I suspect we're probably gonna do it again this year. Uh, I, I just, I think it's a, for the annual town meeting right now, it's a better venue for us. Uh, that doesn't mean we can't continue to work with Briggs. Oh, you know, we only had the two microphones, they didn't have the mobile microphone capabilities. So, I, I just think that Oakmont gives us a, a better setting and some technological advantages down there.
Okay. Rosemarie?
Um, did you make a motion?
He did.
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor, Leo Jansons, yes?
Rosemary Meisner, yes?
Bill Johnson, yes.
Okay. Now we have approval of the town election warrant.
Do I need to read this whole thing?
I don't think you need to read it in record, but you would like to?
Uh, I would not like to.
You can just approve it as written?
So I would make a motion that the board approve the town warrant for the town of Ashburnham for the election of, uh, Tuesday, April twenty-seventh.
I'll second that.
Uh, just a one point, there is only one position that, uh, that two people are vying for. Everybody else is running on a post.
That is correct, there's only one contested race.
And that would be the school committee position?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor, Leo Jansons, yes?
Rosemary Meisner, yes?
Phil Johnson, yes.
And is that up on the town's website, Mary?
Uh, not yet. I will have to have at least two of you to come in and sign it, and then it has to be signed by the constable and posted legally at the locations, and then we'll post it on the website.
Okay. Now we go to the website review committee report. Mr. Mulhall.
Good evening, folks.
Hey, John, just before you start, I just want to make mention the fact that Leo didn't move you up. I don't know what that's all about.
I know, and even I gave him twenty bucks and everything. I know where I stand. Don't worry. All right, well, first, I'd like to introduce the committee tonight. Myself, I'm the chair, and we have Donna Burton, who is helping us and also doing all of our recordings for our Zoom meetings. Also on the committee, we had TJ Kelly and Donna Michael. And for a good period of time, but unfortunately not the whole time, we had Mary Beth Jansons, who unfortunately had to step down due to some work commitments. So which is a good thing for her. So excellent there. But so just the four of us finished up. So I'm going to run through. We can do questions at the end, but if there's obviously if there's terms that you don't understand, please sing out so that I'm not talking on and on and. And you've missed something because of the terminology. So I'm going to share my screen, Mary, if that's okay. All right, now I think I can pull this off. And of course, it's not letting me share the way that I want to do it. It's doing it the way it wants to do it. If I do it this way, do you get my notes with that as well? Does it give you just a single panel?
No, it has a next slide.
It does have next slide. Let me see if I can adjust this. Sorry about this.
If I did it, we'd all be wiped right off the screen right now.
How about this? Did this work? Or is it the same? All right. Black, red, black slideshow at work. It works a little bit differently. Toggle subtitles, show taskbar. You know what? Let's do it a different way. Sorry about this, folks. And. Let's bring it up over here. And if I. Try it one more time, yet. Hide presenter view and then share and like this. All right, there we go. Excellent. Okay, so. We embarked on this journey to try to figure out what we can do to help get the town's website up to snuff. Where's my next slide button? There we go. So our current status is we're using Civic Plus for our provider, for our website hosting. And for that, we're paying three thousand one hundred and fifty dollars a year for our current hosting platform, which is called Civic CMS. We're in year two of a three-year contract. It's right now, some of the difficulties we're having is it's difficult to implement online forms. So a lot of our forms that we have online are PDFs that you have to print and fill out on your own. And there's some other limited functionality with integrating with some of the processes in Town Hall. That is also because some of the processes in Town Hall are not yet fully digital or not really able to be easily managed as an online service. Something such as building permits and things and inspectional services. So you have to come in, you have to. Fill out a PDF and email it, so which is doable, and we're getting by, but it's not streamlined and it's not really. Up to the, you know, twenty-first century standards of a lot of other of I will say larger, more affluent communities that can pay for these services. But I think that we can do a lot to get there. Right now, the town has five websites that I would consider town websites. We have our main town website. We have the library. We have the light department. We have the DPW, and then we have the schools. So of those, obviously, the schools, they're under their own budget. They're doing their own thing. Light Department, same thing. Library, to a certain extent, the same thing. And then we have the DPW, which they're taking care of out of their budget. And then we have our main town website. So what we did to try to figure out how we're going to approach this is we sent out. A request for kind of a request for information in a semi questionnaire to the boards, the committees, and the commissions in town. And we asked for their feedback about what they think about the website and what they'd like to see on the website if we were going to make some changes. So we received a handful of responses back, some excellent responses, I will say, from Lorraine De Souza from Open Space and Recreation and some good. Good insight from Cultural Council and some good suggestions from Advisory Board. So some of the suggestions were to give the boards access to update their own pages, and that would help keep information current. With that, it would be good to designate someone to act as a webmaster for each of either throughout the town, and I know Donna Burton has been playing that part. But maybe somebody from each board, committee, or commission to be the webmaster. And it would be great if there was a less techie method for updating pages. That was kind of echoed from a couple different responses, but unfortunately, I think that's. That's partly the tools that we have at our disposal to make page updates, so that there is some technology and some knowledge that has to go together to get. To get the pages updated. But I did want to bring up that it was noted by a few people that it's tough to get updates done on your own. Each committee should have their own news and events listed on their own pages. So if you want to see what's going on for Parks and Rec, you go there and you get all the Parks and Rec stuff, and they can keep their own calendar. They can post their own news. So each committee would be able to do that. Just about everybody I talked to, everyone within the boards, committees, and commissions who gave feedback, we did a survey, which I'll get to in a minute. Everyone says we need to clean up the homepage and improve the navigation options. Another thing that's always talked about is removing or updating outdated information. And I know that Donna can speak to this, but I'll just I'll just sum up in saying that we can only update what we're told to update. So it's not something that in not something that Donna can do to go in and clean up somebody's. Somebody's webpage, somebody's page on the town website. If, you know, she doesn't know what actions have happened, what meetings have or have not gone on, information that needs to get out there. It's really up to the chair. Or a designee to reach out to her to get things updated and removed or replaced. So that's kind of a hand in hand with Town Hall processes and with the boards, committees, and commissions working together to make sure that they're policing their own sites. And one other common recommendation was to add more photos and relevant documentation. As well as local maps, and I think Lorraine, you were the one that really put that in there, and a few other people kind of mentioned it to have. You know, if mapping is important to your committee, to have mapping in there and add that as appropriate to each. Then we sent out a survey to the town, and we got, I think we only had about thirty-five responses, but, you know, we weren't shocked at that. And with a questionnaire about what folks were looking for, what are they using the website for? What would they like to see changed? What are some of the problems they're having? So I added a few here. These were the most. The most suggested things that people would like to see changed. A lot of people had trouble finding the meeting calendars and meeting minutes and figuring out when committees were meeting. That was the number one. Finding a town hall directory so that they could figure out who to contact. A lot of people want to see an events calendar. There was a lot of discussion on that one. Some people wanted to see town events. Some people wanted to see community events, such as if the Girl Scouts were holding something, things like that. A lot of folks mentioned online payments. We do have online payments for some things, and. I think that folks either don't understand that or couldn't find it. Either way, they're suggesting that it's an issue, so it becomes an issue, because if people can't figure it out, then it's an issue for us. Town bylaws, town news, and that kind of goes back with the events calendar. A lot of folks wanted the town news to be expanded to include more of what's going on in the community. Many folks wanted to have some more COA resources available online. Many people were looking for COVID nineteen information. They weren't specific on that, because I know that we are posting some COVID nineteen info. A lot of folks looking for dog license information and how to and to be able to do it online, which we can do. So again, it seems like we may have a little bit of a problem with. It's not really communication, but if folks can't find it, then we have an issue because we're not displaying it correctly. Back to online forums, a lot of people want to be able to do things online and not have to come into Town Hall or not even call Town Hall. They want to be able to go to the website, find what they're looking for, fill it out, send it in, and be done. And lastly, is the Town Hall hours. Many people were looking for that, which during COVID, I think, is why we've changed it. It's no longer on the front, on the homepage of the town website. But it's because Town Hall isn't open to the public due to COVID. So that might be where some of that confusion lies. Moving on, so we decided we're going to come up with recommendations for short-term, midterm, and long-term updates or changes. So the number one thing that may help with a lot of the comments about I can't find this, I can't find that. Civic Plus has this tool called Chatbot. It's a new tool. It's an artificial intelligence tool. They're using it in Portland, Maine, and a few other communities, but they pointed us to Portland, Maine to try it out. And what it is, it's a little search box. It's like a chat window that pops up at the bottom. And it's separate from the search, so you can still use the traditional search if you like that. But what this does is it performs a search function, but then it learns about the responses. So you say, I'm looking for dog licenses, and it may give you three results, and you click on one. It will remember that. And so it will be trained by the people's responses and what they click on, what they should, what it should be giving you. So if I go in and type in dog licenses, I could get things about, you know, bylaws about the dog licenses or things like that, or it can take me to where I can actually fill out the form and do my dog license online. So after a few times, it'll stop showing me the things that probably aren't what I'm looking for and give me just how to do my dog license online. Now with that, we can preload this thing. So if we know that somebody's looking, so if we were to, I'll use the dog, I'm going to use the dog license example a lot, because a lot of people talk about it, and it's kind of easy to talk about. So if we know that people are going to want to type in dog license into the chatbot, and they're going to want to go to the page where they fill it out and do the process. Then we can go in and we can actually preload that and say, if you ask for dog licenses, give this answer, and we can do that for anything. And in order to keep this thing running smoothly, we should be doing that periodically. And if we don't, it's going to kind of stop being effective, and I think people will stop being interested in using it. So this is a tool that we can implement for twenty-four hundred dollars a year. It's a year by year. So if we try it for a year and we don't like it, we just turn it off. If it turns out to be, you know, to save the day, then fantastic, then we can go on and we can keep using it and twenty-four hundred dollars a year. So the second thing, I'm sorry, I should back up a second. With our three-tiered recommendations, we went for. Cheap to low to no cost for the short-term things and the things that we can do immediately. The midterm is going to be things that we might want to look at over the next. Twelve months, and then we have some long-term things. It's more as Ashburnham grows and things become more digital within Town Hall. So. The next step in the short term is to perform a minor reorganization to fix some of the layout issues that people were talking about. And with this, we can do a lot of this in-house. This is going to keep Donna busy. We can get a lot of free support from Civic Plus. So this is kind of a no-cost update that we can do. It's not going to be a total layout redesign or anything like that. We can change a few photos, move a few buttons around, make things flow a little bit better. We're also recommending that we add a town-managed Facebook and Twitter account. Now, this would be for crossposting of news and events. So as things get posted to our news on the website, it would automatically be posted to our Facebook and our Twitter, and there would be no commenting allowed on the Facebook and Twitter. So we wouldn't have to worry about managing it and people getting out of hand, fielding questions. It would just be a view-only type of situation. So it would just give us another avenue to get information out there to folks who don't go to the website for some reason. Would also let us put information out there. We all know how Facebook gets a little out of hand, and there's a lot of hearsay that goes on, so we could post things to Facebook from the town. That are specific town information that we want to get out there. Next, we discussed another tool, which I'll get to in the next slide, but it's called Civic Optimize. And what it is, it's for online forums, and it's a whole online cloud-based package that can be used to generate forums, track forums, can be used internally. By town employees using your cell phone. DPW could take it out in the field. It has GPS capability through your phone. So, for example, if they had. You know, a summer intern and they sent them out and said, find all the potholes, that person could go out and flag all the potholes on their phone and bring it in, and they could have a map of everything in town. It could be used with inspectional services as they could set up an online form for submitting a building permit, and then that can be tracked. Through the system as the inspections were done, photos were taken, and things like that. So before we sign on to that, I had a nice, long conversation with the building commissioner this morning, and so we are definitely looking at. A recommendation to have them come in and do a demo for us to show us everything that it can do. Obviously, there's a little bit of work that's going to go into it, but it's a, I'll get to it in another slide, but it seems like the next step, and this was the recommendation of Civic Plus. That we get into this to this tool. So the first, but before we get into it, short-term recommendation is to get a demo and see if it's something we really want to do. And lastly, in our short-term recommendation, something that came to light in my last conversation on Friday with. With our web developer with Civic Plus is the American Rescue Plan Act reimbursements. And Brian, I don't know if you've looked into these yet, but. You know, I'm sure you haven't looked into them specifically for websites, but apparently there are communities that are getting reimbursed for upgrades to the website. Civic Plus. Just added this in where they can give us some guidance and help us through the process. I'm not exactly sure what we could claim reimbursement for. It depends on what we're going to try to do. But that is something that we could look at in the short term. I believe that reimbursements can go all the way through twenty twenty-four, but he was saying something about. All the money gets paid out upfront, and then you submit your claims to the state. So just something to think about as we start deciding what we want to do. Looking at midterm, if we want to do a full redesign of the website and get ourselves a new template and everything changes. It's effectively a whole new website. We're keeping our content, but it looks different. That's forty-five hundred dollars one shot. I think the last time we did it, Donna, you can correct me if I'm wrong. I think it was twenty seventeen. We might have done it last. We can also, if we decide that we want to get on a schedule for it, we can do a four-year schedule for redesign and just pay Civic Plus seven hundred and fifty a year. And then on year four, we get the redesign done. And so it keeps us from having to put out forty-five hundred in one shot. At that time, we would identify any other gaps that we have in our website and in our layout. Well, that's the best time to do some major fixes, major page consolidations. If we need to break things up and do things differently, add all those extra calendars or things like that, that's probably the time we want to do it. And here's that Civic Optimize that I was talking about. It allows for a no-program online form creation, so you don't need to have, you don't need to know how to code to create all these forms. It's actually similar to a tool that I use at work, and it's very easy to use, very easy to manage, available to everybody in town with a login, and it can be used to post. Things on the website, and we can collect the data from there and take those forms that people have filled out and move them through our process within Town Hall. And there are, this is the base package, and then if we want to integrate it with Microsoft Office, Office three sixty-five. To have things happen automatically as people put stuff in, we can do that, higher cost for that and takes a little bit more. Work, we'd have to lean on Civic Plus a little bit more if we don't have someone in town with the know-how. This Civic Optimize package is forty-five hundred dollars a year, and it's a fifty-five hundred dollar one-time setup. And as I said, this is the recommendation from Civic Plus if we want to start getting into more online forums and digital workflows. And it can be used within Town Hall. So if we're finding that we're still doing things on notebooks and emailing things to each other, you can use this system to create some. Some online forums that are used internally to pass things around and get sign-offs as it goes from department to department. We're also recommending that we look at rolling the DPW site into the town website as a sub-site, much like we did with the police. It's a five hundred dollar a year cost to add that site, and it's a three thousand dollar setup. And that would just really that eliminates one of the websites that we have, eliminates that from the DPW budget, brings it back into the town budget. And also removes the responsibility from having to keep it up from the DPW. And if we're already maintaining one website, adding a little bit to the DPW webpage at the same time wouldn't be a huge lift. So that's something we can look at as well. And lastly, in the midterm, we're recommending the town consider. Implementing a technology oversight committee. Now, in the past, what we've done is when we've had things like IT upgrades to do. We've established a short-term committee, much like this website review committee, to take a look at that particular issue. So what we're recommending is that we have a technology oversight committee that would kind of keep all these things in mind and look at. Do a little forward-thinking, a little planning. We'd look at, we, the committee would look at things like, how is the website going? Do we need to have another redesign? How is the, you know, when we've done the cable, the fiber optic upgrades between various town departments and buildings? They would look at things like this and kind of take away the need to set up individual committees. This would be something, you know, we're envisioning something that would either report to the select board or to the town administrator, you know, an advisory only type. report to the select board or to the town administrator, you know, an advisory only type committee. Then looking long-term, streamline and digitize the internal town hall processes. I know that we're doing a lot of things digital, but keeping a, keeping an Excel spreadsheet and emailing it around is, is one way to do it, but it might not be that, that's not necessarily always the best way to do things. Sometimes something like that civic optimized package that I was talking about where it's, it's more of a, more of a targeted approach to being digital and getting, getting rid of the notebooks and the paperwork and things like that. Conversation that I had with the building commissioner is that they're running out of room, physical space to store a lot of the permits that they get, especially if you get a couple rolls of plans that takes up space and over years and years, you start to run out of, run out of room. So if things were digital, it would all just be cloud storage. We could also, as we streamline the town hall processes and kind of get things a little bit more online, we could upgrade to a larger package. With Civic plus, they, their next step up, the civic optimized I talked about runs on the civic CMS platform that we have. The next step up is civic engage, which is a little bit bigger. It includes more of a portal solution. It doesn't do forms as well. It doesn't have that same civic optimized tool. So it adds some other things that we may not need at this time, like they always like to bring up. You know, for parks and rec, if you have to schedule ball fields, we, we don't really need that. So they didn't really sell me on anything that we need here and they weren't suggesting that we move to this. But as we develop, this might be a next step for us. It's $6,500 a year, but it's a 15 to $25,000 setup fee. Certainly for that price, we're, we're not recommending it in the short term until, until we feel we need it. They've also come out with a new product called Engage six, which is a true portal. And don't worry about the, the usage of the word portal. It's, it's, there, there's some web tech in here that, that I think we don't need to worry about, but this definitely lets, lets townspeople log in with their own username and password and customize feeds and things like that. They've just rolled it out in one community, but they're still testing it. By the time we're ready, this tool might be ready and it might be something that we want to look at, you know, in the next five to 10 years as things progress. And lastly, long-term, understanding that there is a dollar cost, hire a full-time webmaster, not necessarily full-time, hire a webmaster. Donna's doing a great job, but she wears other hats and she has to think about all the other things that she has to do. Plus she has to be the webmaster and there's a few other folks in town that have the chops, but everybody's has to put on a second hat to do it. And as, as things become more digital and the world is really, really turning online, our, the way that we've, that we've handled it and our current, our current outlook as to what we need as far as, you know, a webmaster position, we're, we're very quickly getting past what we're capable of doing with, with our current system. So looking at hiring a webmaster is probably where we're going to end up if, as we implement some of these other solutions. So that's it. So any questions?
I have a question.
Sure.
So, um, did you, did the committee look at those websites that the MMA every year wins awards for? So they have different categories. They have small town, like medium town, you know, city. And they give awards based on the best websites. Cause what I was curious about is who are they using? And what package are they using?
No, we didn't, you know, just, just to say it right up front, we didn't. We worked with Civic plus and we asked them, what are some of your model websites that you want to share with us? And they showed us a handful of communities. Torrington, Connecticut was, was my favorite. I think their website is fantastic. There were a handful of others. Can't think of any others that's top of my head right now. So we kind of let them guide us as to where they think that we could go with ours. But I will, I'm going to put that on my list, Rosemary, to take a look. X, I'm curious.
Yeah, no, it's, it's interesting. And, and you know, I've looked at a couple of the ones that have won just recently, like in 2020, Groton won. But you know, when you look at the Groton website, you don't see any indication of Civic pluses, you know, you know, who, who's running it for them. Whereas there are others that are clearly civic plus. So I, I don't know if this is another vendor or, you know, how it's working out.
Yeah. I'll take a look.
Yeah, that'd be great. Yeah. Yeah, like, um, here's one, South Hadley uses Civic plus. And Irving won in the small town category. And it's civic plus as well. So I, I, I'm just bringing it up because maybe it gives you an idea of layout, you know, the better layouts.
Yeah. And, and we're not alone in our layout. What we've, what I've seen is we seem to have the stock layout. And if we want to make major layout changes, really without getting into a full redesign, they have an art director that we could work with if we wanted to do something unique, comes at a cost. So I think that, you know, we've, we've been getting by with our current standard design, but you know, maybe, maybe when it's time for a redesign, we, we do look at another template they have. Cause I think that the templates are, are as is, but if we want to really, really reach out and be different, we could, we do have that option with them at a cost. Great. Anyone else? Questions? Comments? Thoughts?
I'm good at the moment, Bill.
Okay.
No, I'm good, John. Just, I wanted to thank you and your committee. I'm kind of familiar with these committees. I know it's a lot of work and a lot of extra time, so please pass on my thanks to your committee members for taking on this project. So I don't have any questions. You know, we got this a couple of days ago, so I was able to look it over, but again, it, it seems like I'm in the spending mood. I'm ready to blow this website up and, and jump right to the midterm redesign, full redesign, just blow this damn thing up. And really, you know, get some of the changes in there that we need to get done because I just can't see again, another project dragging out for a couple of years while we're trying to figure out what we're doing. But I, I actually, John, I did have one question on that, on the midterm full, the full redesign. You got a cost of $4,500, but if you do it over four years, it's 750 bucks. Now, I was not a math major in school.
Does it?
But that doesn't seem to work for me because seems like if they were going to do it over four years, it'd cost you more money. So I was just curious about that.
Yeah, yeah. Let's see. Yeah, something isn't right there. I'll have to get back to them on that because we all looked at that and said, oh yeah, that looks great. And four people gave that the nod. I'll check on that for you, Bill, because that's, that'd be interesting.
Yeah, thank you, John. Definitely. And yeah, if you, if you can't find the link to that MMA stuff, I can send it to you.
Sure. Absolutely. Thank you, Rosemary. That, that'd be great. I'll take a quick look. I'll reach out if I can't find it. So I actually had a question for the board. Now that we've gotten to this point, does this committee continue? Do we kind of wait in the wings until, until we do something else? Do we dissolve or we'll think about it and let us know?
We'll think about it and let you know.
That's what I figured. Excellent. All right. Well, that's all I had, folks. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
And when we do dissolve the committee, John, we're going to tap you to do some other committees.
I know.
All right. Now we have something on the website, Ashburnham Sign Project. But Mary and I were unsure on that. Mary, did, did you get any answer?
Yes, we did have a request to put the Ashburnham Sign Project. That would be for the EDC. And then the other cleanup sign is, is a sign request to the Board of Selectmen for temporary signs.
So who's here to speak on the Ashburnham Sign Project? Do we have anybody tonight?
I, I don't believe so. You know, they, they sent the information out including the bid, right? The sign quotes.
Okay.
I think they're just looking for whether or not this is enough for us. I mean, you know, that was an action item they had. So these are the welcome signs that go, they're recommending that one goes at 119. I can't remember where the other one goes. Do you know, Brian? I can't remember.
I don't know. And I, I don't believe, I'm not sure I'm on that email.
Yeah, the, there was three sites. One was 119, the other was, I think, Route 12 South, we come in from Westminster. And I think the other one was on 101, heading towards Gardner.
Right, correct. So on Phil Papoujian, who headed up that project for economic development, sent the, the estimates, the two estimates that he got. And you know, is, is this something that we can even do right now? I guess is what they're looking for. Do we move forward with it? What do we want to do? But it was sent to the three of us.
Right. So they're actually recommending one sign.
Of the three locations, just one at the moment?
Correct.
Okay.
And that would be out at the intersection of 101 and 119.
Okay.
And there is actually a picture in there that has a, a triangle that indicates where they'd like it to be. They've had preliminary discussions with the property owner. And there's a couple of conditions on there that don't seem to be too overbearing. I, I didn't see where that the committee had made a recommendation about either the sign and/or the vendor. I guess they're leaving that up to us.
Yeah, I mean, looking at prices, I think that's the, I mean, it's, it's a significant expense. Is this something that we want to pursue? Do we want to scale it back? I mean, we're in the middle of a spending freeze.
And the private property, is that the property that's being developed presently?
No.
It's a separate owner or a separate piece?
It's across the street. You know, the, the owner is Richard Roy, 465 Ashby Road. And and again, you know, I'm not sure how much of that is in a, is it state property? Some of it's, you know, the, the private property, some of its town property. I'm not sure where exactly the, the boundary is there. And then there's also a, a couple of options that are listed in there. If you were to use Gold Leaf and change that to gold paint, it'd be about $750 less. If there is, this quote includes two granite posts and installation. If you were to get somebody else to install it, you could save about 500 bucks doing that. And if the town applies for the permit, you can save 250 bucks for that. So I wouldn't think we'd have a problem getting a permit for it. So.
I see these signs in a lot of towns that I work in. I'm a little hesitant on putting a sign on private property.
Well, I don't, I don't know. Like I said, I don't know that it is private property. It, obviously that's the butter. You know, and I don't know if you have to, I don't know if Steve's still with us or not, but if you have to get permission from the state, you know, to have it in proximity, I, I just don't know what the rules are there, but.
No, Steve is, Steve is left for the evening. But that's something we can, you know, look into. And I had a conversation with Phil in regards to the sign and its location, you know, and I said for the DPW part of it, you know, if we could, you know, we, we would excavate for the sign and also assist with the installation just to help, help it come to, to fruition, if you will.
So what would the cost be again for the one sign at this point?
Well, if you, I just, I'm looking at the bid here. So I, the first quote is from Lyman Sign. And again, I don't know if this is the right one or not, but they're quoting for the two-sided sign, the brackets, the granite, $4,508. And then if you take out the, the gold leaf and go with gold paint and you go with, you know, we install it and something else, that's about 1,200 bucks. So off of that quote, it would take you down to $3,308. But again, and then the other quotes, there's from Wausau Arthur. One is a five by four sign for 94.95. And the other is a four by three for 75.56. So the Lyman quote, I don't see right there what the size of the sign is, but hold on, let me look.
There's two. There's a three by four for 4,500 and the, and with his, with, that's the one with the double-sided one is 69.36.
Okay, yeah.
So if we go with two of them, it's 72.66 from Lyman. Whereas Wausau Arthur is 97.20. Did I get that right? 90?
So maybe, what do you think about the prospects of kicking your back to economic development and asking them for a recommendation of who they would like to go with on this, on the sign? And then that'll also buy us a little bit more time. I think it's a good thing to do. Obviously, that money could, could come out of economic development. You know, there, there is money in there to do that. We're certainly not doing three and they're not recommending three. Maybe we could get some clarification as to which sign they'd like to go with and then try to figure it out and see if we can move forward with it. I think we should do it.
That makes sense. And something comes up on the agenda. It is nice to have somebody to speak on it.
Yeah, they must've just forgot. I told them that it was on for tonight and.
So we'll put it on at a later date.
Yeah, ma- maybe we could also during that time, get some clarification. You know, Randy, as far as placement of the sign as it relates to a highway and if we have to check with DOT or any of those things, and if it does end up with a portion of it on private property, then I, I would suspect we'd have to have some sort of an agreement that we'd have to get put together to, you know, be there, hold harmless or something to authorize us to do it.
I think I, I think I'd like to see us ask Debbie before we even had that conversation. If, if it's a conversation that we should even have, I guess is.
I think that'll be dependent on what we find out about, you know, how close we can put the sign to the road or, you know, where the, where the state property have it so many feet from the center line or what the deal is out on, on that particular piece of road.
But I'm, I'm just thinking before we have any, if it were to come to it, before we had a conversation with a private property owner, we should run it by Debbie and see if she even recommends we do that or not. Rather than wasting the time and then finding out, oh, no, no, we can't do it.
Yeah, no, I think that's a good idea.
So we'll, we'll hold it for a later meeting. Rosemarie, if you want to speak to them and they can get back to us to which next agenda to put them on?
Yeah, I will.
Okay.
So Leo, let me ask you this. Are you fundamentally opposed to it? Do you think it's a good idea? What, what, which way are you leaning?
I see them in a lot of other towns and they really look nice. I just have a thing about putting something down owned on private property. I see them in a lot of other towns and they really look nice. I just have a thing about putting something down owned on private property. The concept of the sign, I, I think it's excellent.
All right, good.
Yeah, and the reason I chose, uh, one oh one and one nineteen is to capture the people who are at Watatic, uh, trying to push them downtown. Uh, but, but I do remember the conversation that there is a s- sign, a state sign that says Ashburnham, uh, that is pointing down, uh, one oh one. Uh, so it's possible we could put this sign someplace else.
Okay. I, I think it's Rutland I see has them. And one of the other towns I go through often has them.
A, a lot of towns have them. It's pretty standard. Gardner has one.
Yes, I think you're right.
Yeah, they do. I, Winchendon has one. Um, I'm pretty positive Westminster has one. Pretty much everybody does, but Ashburnham.
We have one. It's just on Town Hall, their Town, uh, Town Hall lawn.
That's right. They have to get here.
Yeah, it's on the idea of that sign with the.
Exactly.
And it.
So they're using the same schoolboy as the branding for it. So that's why it's consistent.
Okay. And it would be green also, like?
Correct. Correct.
Doesn't that go along with our historical district signs? Uh, are they shaking? Yes.
Yeah, I, I can't remember what they look like.
I think it does.
Yeah.
So it keeps uniformity. All right. So we'll, we'll have them come back and, and speak to us. And in the meantime, we will move on to town cleanup. We have a request. There's, and Lorraine's going to talk on this. There's a, a movement out in town that some lady started on social media and it looked off like a brush fire. And it's to clean up all the nip bottles along the sides of the road. Part of the program that they want to do, they want to put signs around town to, to advertise it. So I, I told the lady that we would put it on our agenda to have the board authorize them to put signs on town property. So that's, that's what that means. So I had the one that spoke to her, but now we're here together is the three of us. So do you guys want to vote on the sign thing? Or do you want to have Lorraine speak first and then we'll take a vote?
I'd like to hear from Lorraine.
Okay, because she's going to be speaking on a couple of things, but at the moment, we're going to start with the town cleanup. So it's to you, Lorraine.
All right. Okay, hi, um, well, thank you. And Jane Padilla, whose video is blocked, is the woman that you were referring to, who, yes, posted on Facebook. And I saw it, thanks to Rose Marie, and I contacted her. And a lot has happened since then. Um, it's gone way beyond nips. We now have formed a local chapter of Keep Massachusetts Beautiful called Keep Ashburnham Beautiful. And we have a townwide dumping and litter campaign planned for the twenty-fourth. Now, regarding the signs, most of them are not going to go on town land. There might be a couple that go on town land, but they're going to be distributed throughout town like all the other signs are.
Do you mean like on front lawns, like political signs?
Like political signs, exactly. You know, on the side of the road, political signs.
Okay.
To get people's attention. Um, there'll be signage on the day of the event, alerting people that there's something going on because we're concerned about people being out in the roads. So I've been talking to the, the police department. We're going to ask them to, you, to, um, allow us access to the, or to put something up on their electronic sign indicating that there are people in the roadway today doing this cleanup. But originally Jane came to you just for a couple of signs on town land. I'm thinking maybe twenty-five signs around at intersections, especially as people are coming into town. Um, so there'll be two sets of signs, signs that announce the event and then, and then signs caution the people to watch. So, um, I do have a PowerPoint presentation. If I can show that to you, that'll, that kind of runs through what, what we're planning to do. Unless you want to keep it just to the signs themselves.
Uh, how about my other two members? What do you guys feel?
I, I'd like to see the presentation.
Okay.
Good, here we go. Share my screen. There we go. Okay, so. Oh, jumped ahead already. Um, so since Jane and I spoke, we've been pretty busy. And this event is now up on Facebook. We have our own Facebook page and a Google Forms signup, registration process. We have our own mailbox, post office box and email address. So we're setting ourselves up to be, um, a a long-term civic organization that will be focused on beautifying further or maintaining the beauty of Ashburnham. We can't make it more beautiful than it is, but we can certainly try to protect it from litter and, and dumping. Um, we're a local chapter of Keep Massachusetts Beautiful formed on April second. A board member so far are Jane Padilla, myself and Kim Anson. And our, all our contact information is there. I'm hoping that I can refer people to this meeting to get some details. Um, so I put this information there for them to see it. Um, and again, it was, it was a response to Jane's innocent Facebook posting. We are, uh, we will be joining thirty-two other communities and aligning ourselves with the Keep Massachusetts Beautiful mission of litter prevention and cleanup, waste reduction and recycling, beautification and community greening and environmental education. And as I said, um, because there's, I think at some point, if we are successful enough, we will form a five oh one C three organization, but for right now, we're piggybacking on Keep Massachusetts Beautiful so that our donors can deduct their charitable contributions. And that was a pretty quick process. Um, what we're needing right now is, um, we're looking for three types of volunteers, three or four types of volunteers. We're going to have people pick up the trash, put it in bags and leave it in place on the side of the road. And we're going to have people go around in their pickup trucks and move those bags to the DPW yard and put them in the trash, in the, in the, to the dumpster. We thought that would alleviate traffic liability issues. It would, instead of having everyone drive their bags to the to the dumpster itself, we just want to pare those numbers down. We're working on a system where we'll have someone monitor the quadrants and drive around and try to watch to see where people are are working, if they need bags, if they need help, and then to start collecting them. So we're going to have those sentries to safeguard the pickers. We've talked to the police department about getting cones, borrowing cones to let motorists know that the activity is ongoing in the streets. Um, we've been soliciting donations and originally when I talked to uh, Steve, who was quite willing to pick up the trash and they've been very helpful. When he was first approached by Jane, he thought it was a couple of streets. And then he heard about the posting on Facebook and became concerned. So we went over there and quickly got control of the, of the situation and assured him that w- we had it, you know, we, we have this, we can do this. And that's one of the ways that we're going to manage is by not allowing the public to have access to the, to the dumpster. We had originally wanted, well, we were asking, I'm sorry, part of the conversation that was Jane was having with Steve and Jane, if I misquote you, please correct me, but, um, Steve was very good about saying that he would not let the project die for lack of a couple of hundred dollars for a dumpster. And for a long time, you know, for the number of days, that was the best guarantee that we had. Um, since then though, we have raised all of the money that we need to fund the entire project. So we don't need town money to do that. Remember that because I'm going to ask for money later on, but for this part, it, uh, we've got it covered. We've got the dumpster. We've got T-shirts. We've got bags. We've got signs. Um, that's all covered. Next slide. Um, so we set up our bank account. We've got our fiscal sponsor agreement with KMB. We've contacted the police department, the fire department and the DPW. And as I said, we have a Facebook page with registration so that we can keep track of where this activity is going on. So we know where to go to find the bags. And we've fundraised to cover the entire event. Roughly the cost is going to be, um, at least like, yeah, the annual dues to join Keep Massachusetts Beautiful is two hundred dollars. The mailbox is a hundred dollars. The dumpster is about five fifty. Two hundred dollars for trash bags, different colored trash bags, because we want to try to somewhat separate it out. Um, we are going to have signs for the, out to the inventor and for safety during the event. The T-shirts and I have, we have a goal of disposing of twenty-four tires and I'll talk more about that later on. Again, this is how we're going, we're going to put it out there to the public. We're going to look for pickers. They're going to be instructed, we'll have kits, a T-shirt, instructions. And information about what it is exactly we want them to do. As I said, we're going to have the truckers come get the bags. And because most recyclable cans and bottles are rendered not acceptable for recycling because they become caked with road dirt, cigarette butts, they're not drained, they're dirty, they become trash anyway. So those are just going to get thrown into a trash bag. Um, and because e- even if we were to submit them for recycling, they'd be sorted out of the mix and trashed. And two, two haulers have told us as much. So we're considering, we, we know people really want to recycle. There's going to be a heavy push. These are the kind of people that love recycling, want to do the right thing. Um, I mean, there will be some, some cans that are clean, they'll be fresh. They might still even be worn, who knows? As, as occasionally there'll be a situation where it would be clean enough to go to the transfer station or to be recycled. So we're going to have clear bags for that. And then there are the redeemables because not all recyclable things are redeemable. What is, what's considered redeemable? We'll go to the Bresner Hand Center down South Ash so that they can redeem them. We're going to have to leave that so much to the discretion of the pickers. It'll all be in their instruction sheets. And like I said, there'll be state safety stewards who monitor oncoming traffic and alert motorists and pickers of each other's presence in the road ahead. The, the police department has suggested we have groups no larger than eight in the street at one time, in a, in a concentrated area. So we're going to advise them to try to keep spaced out. What we need from the town now is someone to man the DP dump, the, the yard at DPW to make sure that the dumpster is not being abused. So I think what they were talking about is that having people just put the bag in a front end, load, pet bags in front end loader. And then, then they would fill the front end loader. So we don't want ax- unauthorized access, citizen access to the dumpster. We're going to, we've have some, at the end of the day, we have tarps. We will cover the tarps to keep it dry. Uh, what we would like is for the DPW to inspect the roads on Monday. So between Saturday and Sunday, we'll transport it to the GPW dumpster, the DPW garage, not the garage, the yard. Um, but I'm sure we'll miss things and people will continue to put things there afterwards. And we're hoping that to get, I know there's a four-hour minimum shift from DPW work, overtime workers. So we're thinking between the hours of eleven AM to three PM should cover the bulk of the activity that day. And there'll be a smaller core of people that will go around and look for things left on the side of the road. We, we're trying to reach out to the schools to see if they'll take care of their grounds and their athletic areas themselves. But we haven't, haven't broken through on that yet. Things like toxic, in medical waste, we're not touching. Uh, but scrap metal, we're going to take to the transfer station. Building materials, things like that is what we'll need some help from the DPW on. We're going to basically handle what can fit in a bag. But there'll be a lot of stuff that's not going to fit in a bag. And we're looking for people with pickup trucks to help us get it to the dumpster. Um, and this is just our fundraising report to this point. We've covered all of these expenses through private donations and through Ashburnham Conservation Trust, who helped us get started. And then the organization is about more than just litter pickup. As I mentioned, it's about greening, green projects, uh, flower boxes. I mean, and there's a number of community projects that can coincide with the community downtown betterment initiatives that, that are having ongoing for a while. But one of the things that we've found in talking to people is that a lot of this trash is coming, is being blown up from the back of garbage trucks as they're leaving town, going around town. So they're, they're charging people to pick it up and then we're having to pay to remove it again a second time because they're not securing the backs of their trucks. So this is from the, uh, Board of Health. There's two pages from the Board of Health, uh, setting the regulations about their legal response, the hauler's legal responsibility to make sure that the trash does not leave the back of the truck. And, and indicating the very last paragraph that there's a five hundred dollar fine for doing that. We'd like to see going forward some enforcement on this. If a hauler is, has to be repeatedly warned about containing their own trash, we think that they should be, we should start to find them for doing it. And there's a considerable amount of stuff that gets just blown out the back. So it's one of the things that the KAB, the Keep Ashburnham Beautiful will be lobbying for in the future. One of the other things we would like to do as an organization is work as a partner with the DPW. And in future fundraisings or our short-term goal is to, goal is to figure out what it's going to cost for an average pickup, cleanup, budget in for two of those and then ask for money to do things like, reimburse the town or be a funding source for the town when possible. Um, for things like CRTs and propane tanks and tires that they find along the road and not, I mean, we run the risk of enabling people saying, oh, the town will pick it up, but people are going to dump it anyway. So we would have a goal of being able to assist the town in maintaining. Once we get it cleaned up, we have to keep it cleaning. And, and that can be a real financial burden to the town. So we would like in our funding, fundraising plans to allow for, as I, as I said, this first time, we're going to try to get twenty-five tower, twenty-five tires off the road. And, and we're willing to give the town two hundred and fifty dollars in order to make that happen. So here's, I just put this list in here as a, as a general, um, informational cost of, of doing to what the, what it's costing anyone who does have to dispose of this. Um, and then there's the public education. We'll be working with people to explain to them how to, about how to reduce trash, um, how to reduce waste, what to do when you do have it, what to do with your electronic waste. And so. So green projects, we, following the K, the Keep Massachusetts Beautiful mission is to adopt a spot and, and these, these tree replenish. And, and these, these tree replenish and trash can be beautiful, the bee pollinator, the pollinator. Support those sorts of things and sort of merge with the garden club, work with the town. Um, some of the potential locations that we can pool our efforts would be River Street. The down, the main street downtown beautification projects. And it would be nice that the gardener hill, as you're coming into town. And you, and you hit those gas stations and the, and the pizza shop, it would be nice to make that area attractive as well as it is our. First introduction for people coming from the south. Then that's it, so. We were looking for money two weeks ago and now we, we are looking for money, we're looking for it in terms of wages. For the town, for the municipal staff to help us basically remove what we're going to find the next day.
Well, Jane and I had a conversation. And she asked me to put it on hold because this was all in the, in the organization stages. So with your question on DPW wages, I would direct you to Brian because he and I had had a conversation. And uh. I know he had said having somebody there at the dumpster. And that, that's as far as that had gone. So rather than you guys speak to me, me speak to him, I will direct you to speak to him directly. And that way messages won't get crossed. Brian, are you here hearing this?
I am hearing this, yeah. So yeah, so it's an overtime shift for, for our guys um, to work it. Um, you know, we were looking, you know, nine to one because that's a four hour shift. You know, I see here that they're looking for eleven to three to make it later in the day. Um, you know, I'm sure we can accommodate that.
Well, we figured there won't be anything to remove. They'll be standing there for two hours waiting for stuff to come in.
Well, we're figuring, you know, seven o'clock in the morning, some people are early birds, they get up, they start moving and by nine o'clock they were ready, you know what I mean? Um, you know, I think some people rather do in the morning and have the afternoon off, but. Um, teach his own. So like I said, we could, you know, we, we can accommodate that. Um, yeah, my, my concern obviously is the first year we, we could get a lot of stuff because. You know, it could have two or three years worth of stuff that's out there. I DPW guys do a great job. Um, you know, so you know, they, there, there's not a lot of rubbish out there, but there is always some rubbish out there. So um, again, you know, other people helping out the DPW is a good thing. Uh, my concern obviously um, is the following day if the rubbish isn't picked up, you know. Who's going around to pick it up on Sunday or are you going to have, leave it there and expect DPW guys to drive around on Monday? I didn't quite understand that part.
Well, what we're figuring is that on Sunday, a lot of, most of it's going to go on the first day, but on Sunday, we'll go back. Just, just a few of us, we won't have it all, we tell them, there'll be a core of group of people with pickup trucks. Who will then go out again to see what is left. And where it is and the things that we can't remove, we were going to sort of map them for a later cleanup. So, you know, continue to do fundraising throughout the year with the goal of actually paying to have the stuff removed. The weekends we can't handle.
Sure.
That doesn't mean they're not there. It's still, it's there now, it's going to be there later.
No, we appreciate the initiative and you know, our DPW guys, you know, they go around and you know, they get everything they can, so this definitely helps them. You know, like I said, the first year, like I said, let's kind of see how it goes and, and, and you know, we can go from there. Um, I know Randy was on, I don't know if Randy has any comments, but. You know, they had talked to me about a few things, what they don't want, you know, no household stuff. You know, my concern is, you know, they're going to be colored bags, can we see into the bag to make sure, you know, that type of stuff. You know, go in eight feet from the curb, don't go, you know, way into the woods searching for things, you know. Kind of stuff at this point in time, if you want to mark those for a future cleanup with your funds, that's probably the best way to handle those. Uh, but I'll let Randy, if he has, I know, do you have any comments or anything I'm missing, Randy?
Uh, no, Steve, I think you covered it all. And again, I met with Lorraine today, you know, in the office, we had a conversation, so. And just in addition, uh, something we didn't talk about. You know, we're not handling tires and you know, big heavy debris on this particular first time cleanup. I would just caution you or you can speak to the people and if it's on the handout, that's great, not, not to bring that stuff up to the edge. Of the road if it's in the woods at this time and it sounds a little crazy, but. Um, with our brush cutting program that we're going to be running this summer, uh, that's a real problem for our equipment. So that would force us to have to spend time, you know, moving all that debris. So our machine can pass down through the shoulders of the roads, so.
But if we put it into our, our own individual pickup trucks and brought it to the dumpster ourselves, that should be okay, right?
Um, yeah, I mean, whatever you're going to bring, if it's allowed to go in the dumpster, we'll, we'll put it in the dumpster. I don't know if um. Tires would be doable for that, though.
Well, those we thought we would take to um. Transfer station, some of those things we thought would go to the transfer station, they would have to be there for one week until the transfer station opened again. So I don't know when you plan on cutting back, but we would not leave them there any longer than we had to. And we would take them as many as we felt we could afford.
Oh, okay, I understand, yeah.
That we would take to the transfer station.
Yep.
Same way with metal. We take metal to, we wouldn't put it in the dumpster, we would take it to be recycled.
Yeah, the, the metal is free uh.
Right.
To dispose of the transfer station, so, yeah.
Like I said, it's first time, we're not exactly sure how it's going to go, but it could be a little ugly because it hasn't been done ever. Except drips and grabs. There are a lot of people who do it though on a regular basis, so it could be a lot worse. And we're going to color, use col- different color bags, so we know what's, what's um. McDonald's cups and what's truly trash and what might be a redeemable.
Okay.
And, and that we know that they're our bags and not people's household, you know, oh, yeah, it's trash day, everybody puts their trash out on the front.
That's important.
So we're going to have those bags and what we would do, we've asked, we've talked about, well, what if people do that anyway, we know it's. It's not in our bags, do we take it or not? And I don't, I don't, we haven't answered for that yet. I don't want to open people's trash bags.
Right.
And I don't want to touch anyone's furniture or mattress. But we were wondering if there are services who do do those things. And at some point, if we could afford to do it, we would hire people to take that stuff out.
All right, Bill, Rose Marie, any questions?
None for me, um, you know, thank you, this sounds great, um, you know, I was excited about. Possibly doing something like this when we brought Neil to a board of selectmen meeting, I think like a year ago. Uh, we thought it was a good idea and thank you for, for jumping on it. And making it a reality, Jane and Lorraine.
It's all Jane's fault. I've wanted to do this for years and so she's surprised at my, my zealousness for my, my, my. My energy into it because I've had these ideas for twenty years and so finally I found some, a good partner like Jane.
Very grateful to Lorraine, let me tell you.
We got a lot done in two weeks.
Yeah. And, and, and as far as like the trap, the roadside trash, I walk um, Williams Platts. Up, up there towards the high school and there's a lot of trash. And it might not be throughout the whole town, but there are pockets where there's a lot of stuff on the roadside.
So we want to set up a maintenance plan, so because it's not a one shot deal, it's going to have to, it'll be bad this year and then. Be better in the fall and hopefully we can just, if we can keep up the momentum and. You know, foster community support for this. It should get easier and cheaper as time goes on. Okay?
All right, so we started out with asking for permission to post signs.
Do we have that?
I got a feeling we're going to have that. Bill, can I get a motion?
Uh, sure, I would um, make a motion that the uh, town allow the, this organization to put. Uh, signs on town property.
I'll second that.
All in favor, Leo Johnson's yes.
Rose Marie Meister, yes.
Uh, Bill Johnson, yes. And Leo, if, if I could, um, I, I just wanted to thank Jane and Lorraine as well. Uh, this is far beyond what I thought this was going to be. And I just think it's great. I, I think a lot of us have thought about things like this. It's going to make me want to dust off my uh, my green, green space gardening thing for the town, so. I'll have to put that on the task list, but also um, I'll, I'll volunteer to be one of those truck drivers. Cause I also have a landscape trailer that uh, I'd be more than happy to uh, donate my time and uh. I may be able to get a couple of other people to help me out as well.
Wonderful.
We're, we're going to try getting a map, a blank map and to have people sort of tell us where, where the stuff is too, so we're just. They did it on Jill Hill, they'll put an X in an area, so we don't. We're going to have to hit good on every road anyway, but it'll be a lot easier if we can just say, look, there's, there's two sites up, Jill Hill, we'll go that way.
If the people that were making the commitments to Jane on Facebook, if they stick with what they said. It looks like, it looks like there's going to be a lot of people out there.
It was a lot of, I was shocked by the support.
Well, let's hope that they actually honor their word, but we'll find out. I think it'll be enough.
And I just wanted to state in a, in accordance with the new bylaw, signed by law, would you need to have somebody come in and fill out a form for the temporary signs? Just indicating um, who's putting it out, how long they'll be, so if there's a problem with removing them, we'll know who to contact and so forth.
That's a good thing and even Jane made a point about a bunch of slides that have been blown around her neighborhood for a while that.
Yeah.
They put up and.
I could find twelve signs, like if I walked around the block here.
Yeah.
Just on the roadside tipped over.
And given that your signs are going to say cleanup, they're going to have to come down in a reasonable time.
Yeah.
That'd be a shame.
We'll make, we're going to reuse them, so we'll make sure we pick them up.
Okay, Mary, so one of us will do that.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you.
And now we're going to hear from Lorraine again on the open space. Having to do with the breast and hand pool cleanup.
Well, I have two open space issues and I'll try, I know it's late, I'll, I'll try to um. I'll try to run through them quickly. The President Hand Pool. Powerpoint presentation um, is twenty-one pages long. And it would have been longer if Jane hadn't distracted me with this other project. So what I started to do and I sent it to you. I, I won't keep everyone up till nine o'clock going through it, but um, I'm, I'm going to. Hit a few slides so you can see where we are with this project. Uh, this one was started by Debbie Moylan, who came to the Conservation Commission. Because she wanted to clear out the Breston Hand, the old Breston Hand Pool site. So let me, actually, I'm still sharing on it, yes, okay.
Is Debbie still involved, by the way? I know she had changed location.
She sort of is, but there's really not much that she can do at this point.
Okay.
Because the stopping point really is um. The stopping point really is Concom. So until we get our concept through Concom, there's nothing that they can do. But this is another one that I started talking with Janice Packard Roy and Kim Nelson, who. Leo, you may know all of this stuff already. Live, he's the grandson, he, right here where JR Briggs used to live.
Yep.
JR Briggs, who taught many people to swim and saved a few lives doing it. So they've been feeding me all sorts of information and again, getting me off track. I started this just to give Concom an idea of what we wanted to do. And now it's this history lesson, which really was, it made it a much more interesting project. Because now I hear building names and, and, and statues and monuments have faces and stories. It, as I researched and Kim and Janice were filling me in. So this just shows you the general area where we're working and what, I don't know what the date of this picture, this photo is, came from Janice. Um, but you can see there's a mill here and something here and.
Lorraine?
Yes?
All I can see is the Ashford Ham litter league.
Sorry, okay, let me go back.
I have a vivid imagination, but that's like, I can't make the, make the leap here.
Stop that too, yeah, because I told it to share that, that presentation, let me try it again, thank you. This one. Okay.
Here we go.
All right. Now, because I know that from Rose Marie, this, the other thing that's stalled, you know, just slowing it down. Is that it's under review um, by the Rapid Recovery Plan?
I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump right in there and say it's no longer under review, so you can just delete that thought.
Oh, okay, so it's.
They're, they're, they might make recommendations, but nothing that would hold you up.
Okay. All right then, Will. As I said, um. Debbie came to me and they wanted to do something, Debbie Morethan of the Sanctuary Ministry Center. That used to be sort of across the street, they've moved, but she's still very much interested in the project, she still think it's a great project, so. She's just waiting for someone to let her go with the peril loppers to get started. So we see this as a multi-year project to control the invasive plants that have moved into that, filled that void from, from the previous activity. And what you're looking here in this photo to the right is, this is the impoundment that was above the Breston Hand Pool. So above that, it goes into raspberry land, the raspberries parcel. And this is where the stream breaks through from the pond behind this. And you can see it right down here as well. Where the water comes out again and then it continues down as Philip's Brook under the road. Now, there's a sewer line in here that goes, I guess it's under the water and through all this bramble. And I wonder about, personally, I wonder about the integrity of the dam. No one's really seen it for years, it's been, it's under all this, this um, overgrowth. So we'd like to prune it back and replace it with. Rhododendrons and blueberries and laurels and indigenous berry bearing plants, um, ornamentals. And things for birds and pollinators, the, just this, the site that, I'll get to another slide, side or slide will show you better. We'd like to have some picnic tables and benches for people to go and sit by the stream. And just restore visual access of people could even go in and wade to Philip's Brook. Down by Main Street, we're think, uh, we're thinking about informational kiosks and flower beds. And Rose Marie mentioned the fact that the light plant is looking for places to put EV station, EV charging stations. So aerial view of the site, the yellow line is the parcel boundary. And it's called the upper and lower impoundment, there used to be three, so the Breston Hand Pool area was down here on the lower center. And I've pointed out where the sewer line is, there's a culvert, so a lot of this is just information for the Concom. Just to give them a sense of what's, you know, what the area, what's left now, of course, is no buildings. There's just these remnants of foundations and walls and. Swing set, there's a swing set still buried in there, um, would like to, we have an idea for replacing that. And this is, this image there, don't forget it, this image is, I'm standing at. On River Street where it changes to Gingerbread Lane, looking east. Towards that first photo where the stream is spilling over the impoundment. So that's what's under there, I'm assuming is sewer line. But we were thinking about trying to sneak a trail through there around the backside of, of the impoundment, but. When you get over there, now it's, you'd have to jump over them, we, we need to build a bridge. And there isn't enough land, it's very tight here and, and the topography is very steep there. So we've abandoned the idea of having a little pathway there. And these are a few images of remnants. Again, I don't know, there's two granite pillars there. This is from Proctor Street looking south. You can see that the upper impoundment is here on raspberry land, and then here's the one that's on town land. And some of the old mill foundations on the bottom here. And as I got into this, I realized that the history of this site is important if we go looking for funding to reclaim this site. The more we knew about it, the better. And so Janice Packard Roy started pounding me with photographs, Kim Nelson started pounding me with photographs. And it has blossomed since. Here's, these images are when they put the sewer line in. Can see where it's wide and it's crossed over. These two buildings here that were donated came from the health farm. It's in the narrative further on up. And of course, they're now gone. And there's the swing set. And this is what, on the right is what it looks like now. Now, one time you could drive right over there. Obviously, you can't do that anymore. I don't know when this went in. Maybe DPW has some thoughts on that. Now, it was told that the pool was shut down because of E. coli. And Chris Piccone from the Conservation Commission was a little surprised that it was coming, that the cause was cited as just the beavers. He was wondering if it wasn't from the sewer line or the houses that were upstream, up slope of it. And he suggested us testing the water before we condemn it as, you know, as a health hazard. Again, these are shots that I showed. It was cold, I didn't wanna go out. So I did everything I possibly could online to get some aerial shots to place it within the context of downtown. So this is standing on Main Street. This image on the right here is where I thought we could put a kiosk and flowers and maybe sculptor. If we had a rotating sculptural installation, it would be a nice way to lead people to the green space. On the left, there's an image in here somewhere. It shows people parking here on the left-hand side. So right now it's full of Japanese knotweed. But it could be a parking spot, or it could be the location of the charging stations. Because at one time this road was much wider. All right, again, this is CONCOM stuff. I'm trying to figure out where the silotation barrier is. About 325 feet. What I'm waiting to hear from CONCOM is, this whole thing is within the first 100 feet of the riparian zone. So at some point, the CONCOM is gonna say, go no further. And once they establish that line, then I can start measuring out how much material we're gonna need and what the process will be for removing it. One of my suggestions to the CONCOM, instead of salt fences, is to use mulch berms. If we start cutting from the road and chipping it and putting those chips along the limit of work line, we'll end up with something like that lower right hand, except for the trees, that lower right hand image. And then to go further, we would buy materials to mulch. Now, there's not a lot there. The soils are really bad because the way the pool was created was they just dug out a big hole. And so if any gardening that's gonna have to occur is gonna need soil replenishment and replacement. And so, and another reason we don't really want materials to leave the site is that it's so thick with invasive berries. That if we just dump them someplace else, then we're gonna infect another site with invasive species. So we would just start clearing from the road in until Marshall says stop. And the line, the bank of the river is rocky. So I'm not too concerned about erosion. I thought there'd be a problem with erosion. But you can walk up to it and there's some very, I mean, they did it for industrial reasons. It was designed to be stable, transport water for power or whatever. So the underpinnings of it is still pretty good. As you can see that hand, this left hand, that's a shot of just looking down into the water, and there's no sand there, no gravel. That's just stone, bedrock stone. This is just a light art image set, again, for CONCOM's sake, to see what the contours are of the area. This is a draft bio survey. If we get money from the state, they always ask you to document what's there and what could be affected, or either negatively or positively. This slide is here, is just, I'm just trying to work this up, is when this information starts to come in, we should have a landscape plan done by a professional. There'll be a cost to that. So I was just trying, in my mind, lay this out. We would draft a restoration plan. We'd present it to the Board of Selectmen for approval. We would submit our final note, NOI, they're currently reviewing a draft one. We would wait for any technical, from planning and technical assistant report, which I'm told you don't need to do anymore. There are a lot of volunteers that are ready to jump in on this project. They have fond memories of this site as being a pretty vibrant community meeting area, gathering area. It'll never be a pool again, most likely, but it could be a nice sort of a botanical garden. We'd start looking for matching grants. And then, once we had our orders of conditions, we'd initiate a cleanup. We've got Tim Slocum and Kim Nelson, who now lives in New York. But, you know, he spent a lot of time there with his grandparents. He's also a landscaper, so he's offered to come with his equipment. DPW made an offer today to give us some help with removal. There's the idea floating around of using goats. And my least favorite is idea is using Roundup, which I'm being only opposed to. I think if we do everything else, and we just keep pressure on it, it's never gonna go away because we can't go onto the properties beyond us and ask them to get rid of their invasives. So the best we can do is just sort of keep it down and manage it so that we can re-enter the site and enjoy it. If we had some grass and some plantings, eventually we might get someone under control. It will require maintenance plan, a long-term maintenance plan. If we partner with the garden club, then then that would assist. And then we might have repeat support from the landscapers who are willing to help us now. There's also someone from Ashby who is willing to come with some equipment for clearing out the invasives and leveling the slate. And one of my ideas, as you'll see on the right-hand side, is you probably recall, there was a chain link fence in quite a drop, cuz that's where all the cannonballs happened, off the wall there. And if we, it's a little dangerous now because it's just a big hole. There's an old fence, an old chain link fence that we can't remove for safety's sake. But if we terraced it on the other side and planted it, it could be a nice, just a nice, a nice way to make it safer and more attractive. And then, of course, we'll draft a budget and implement the plans. And these are just, this is just the history part of it. The land was donated to the town by Carlton Hubbell, who got it from T.R. Ammon, who's the original, one of the original owners. Manufacturer, he had manufacturing facilities down on Maple Ave. This is really, there's one image in here that's really stunning, you probably already know this, but across the street on Maple Ave, on Seven Acres, 34 commercial buildings. Like blows my mind when I, when I look at that. I can't, I can't imagine like how that would have been possible. And I've joked that if Gary and I were driving, looking for a place to live at that time, we would have kept going if we saw that. So it's just a lot of history. The WPA project was employed, I believe, to convert this lower, which was an earthen dam, to a concrete dam. And then the Conservation Corps had some involvement in this too. And of course, the Boy Scouts. And here's the three buildings that are, of course, all gone, that came from the health farm. And here's the guy himself and some of the old photographs from long ago. I'm supposed to take that up, sorry. And this is a sort of a little site plan here that I got from Janice Packard Roy. A little schematic of what, there was a print shop and pale, a pale shop, pale factory. And it lists a lot of names that, that are familiar to us only, without any real references to who they are and why it was that certain buildings were named that. Here's the Seven Acres on Maple Ave. Unbelievable. So in place of the metal swing set, which I hear insurance companies don't like, I was talking to Jacqueline Woodding about, you know, what their ideas are. And her, Mike brought up the suggestion of making this sort of a natural area. It's cheap and it's safer than swings. Something rots, you just get another piece of cordwood and you stick it in. And so we're thinking about having a small park like that in the area where the swing set is. So, and a few additional ideas were, you know, but what's the liability of the volunteers? They'll be in there with their equipment, so maybe, I'm not sure what the town's policy on that is. We'll need an ongoing maintenance plan with help crafted by the landscapers that do this every day. The water quality issue came up. Is there still E. coli there? Or was it GRT? I haven't figured out how safe that water still is. But we're not talking about in this area just waiting. But people are like, put their, I don't know, people put their young children in there. So I, water quality testing would need to be done. I question the integrity of any of those. They're all earthen dams. Have they been inspected, any of them, either of them, of the street? But soil quality can't be good. So anyone planning to plant anything would really need to have a replenishment planned. And I mentioned the terracing of the retaining wall. I stuck it in there just because it occurred to me. Could be a good idea. There would be a draft budget here, again, without clear definition of the work area. There's no way to know, but slowly this could get filled in for plants and seeding. Some granting programs allow in-kind donations, so if you have volunteers performing hours of work, those are credited as matching funds. There are community members who have plants they wanna share, so you don't have to go out and buy expensive ornamentals. The landscaping equipment, well, you know, the hours, if we have to hire anyone, so far it doesn't look like we would have to hire anyone, but if we did, we'd have to determine what their cost would be. If we decided to put in any hard scape, of course, there'd be cost to that if you wanted to have blockways or additional walls, patios. The silotation control, I'm hoping that can be done with woodchips, which would be fairly cheap, or wattles. The picnic benches, I did have a price for those, for the tables and the benches. I didn't put them in here. And then the fine fees, which the only one I really know at this point is $250 estimated. But the bylaw fees would be waived. We would still have to pay the state and the town fees. Some of the partners and people that have been chiming in and are people that we will look to guidance for would be the Community Foundation, Keep Massachusetts Beautiful, which offers grants of $500. Central Mass Goats, if we decided to go that route. Community members, the garden club, the Woodings, who had some ideas, maybe Plantscape Services and so on. DPW, these are just a few potential partners. And then this would be filled with credits. So that's kind of where we are. It's all just ideas at this point. Nothing is hard and fast. And we're just kind of looking, we'll be looking for the Board of Selectmen's approval of whatever it is that we can pull together and find feasibly. Obviously, we're not looking for the money. Any questions? Leo, you're muted?
Yeah, I'm all set at the moment.
And now, thank you for pulling this together, Lorraine. This is great. I did see this draft. I attended the CONCOM meeting a couple of weeks ago. And it's actually expanded since then. A lot of work, Lorraine. Thank you.
Lorraine, do you have a guesstimate of a timeline for any of this?
I'm gonna say three to five years.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. Thank you for putting this together.
Yeah, I have an estimate, a timeline as far as the first whack at the invasives. Would that happen?
Right away, yeah. As soon as CONCOM lets us in there, we just start going after it. Because it will be a long process to tame it down again.
So the question I had, you'd mentioned about the 250 filing fees. That's to the state?
It's to the state and to the town.
So if Open Space and Recreation is running this, we are the town, right? Do we have to still pay that, Brian?
And you, yeah, you've already voted for us to expand it out of our Open Space and Recreation Fund.
Yeah, but I was just wondering, do we even have to pay it? I'm asking Brian.
It's monopoly money, but.
Sometimes, I'm not sure if there's a way to avoid paying it. Sometimes there's no out, so.
With the state, there's no out.
Yeah, I knew that, but I didn't know whether or not, because it's a town committee, it's essentially the town going to CONCOM.
No, I, I've had a town acquire a property that had real estate taxes on it. I made them pay the real estate taxes to the town.
Oh, you're just, yeah.
There's no remedy, there's no remedy to remove it. It's just the way it is. So if there's a remedy to avoid that, I would for sure.
Okay, yeah.
Right, I think that's just vindictive.
And I'll resubmit this with some changes that I've made, if you're interested in reading into them. Again, it's a little, it's a little choppy because I got distracted towards the end, but.
All right.
Okay, if you're done with that, I do, I do have one more request, and this one is for money.
We have a PowerPoint presentation?
No PowerPoint presentation.
In motion, do adjourn.
See, that I've tried so hard to save money for the town, and not only save it, but generate it. The Open Space and Recreation Committee would like to, needs to, very quickly, take a survey from as many town people as we can regarding the update of our Open Space and Recreation Plan. And while, as expressive printing promotion, I have offered to print it for nothing. But we need $500 to mail it to an EDDM process. We will also do things online, but as you can see, there's not a lot of response through online. There is a, an element of the population who doesn't have a computer, don't have, they don't have the capacity. I have customers that don't have email addresses. A lot of the blue collar workers, they don't, they've got a flip phone, and that's it. And there are people who just don't have the capacity to do it. They would be underserved if we don't give them an opportunity to express their desires. On this plan, so we're asking from our budget. Are we asking for our budget? Yes, if it's there, and I believe it is, we're asking you to allow us to expand an additional $500 for the EDDM postage. Because I can't fund raise for that.
Does that come under the board, or does that come under you, Brian?
The Open Space and Recreation Committee works, you know, falls under you guys. So they would request it to you, and then you would request it from me, since I have a spending freeze. I think there's $1,000 in that account, but if they're gonna use 250 for that fee, maybe some others. You know, there probably is 500 there, but that's probably right around what they have left.
Okay. So how does the board feel about authorizing the expenditure for the mailing?
Um, I, I just, I was on mute. Are we at 1,250 in that budget? Do you know, Brian? I think it's 12:50.
Maybe talk about, no, there's a thousand, I thought there was a thousand twenty-seven or twenty-eight left, maybe, maybe it's all still there.
Left, we haven't spent any of what we've allocated. What we, we promised to 50.
I'm looking, I'm looking. Rec historical. Yeah, because if you spend 250 on the filing fee, that means you got a thousand left, right?
Right, maybe that's what I did. Maybe I did it after the 250.
Right, that's what I'm.
At it a couple of weeks ago, there was, I thought a thousand was available.
Open space, 1272.
Two?
Okay, is what's in there. That's what it, it says for the fiscal 21 budget. It's going to 1275 if it passes town meeting. Three whole dollars.
So shall we vote to authorize Ryan to allow the expenditure over and above his freeze?
Uh, well, I had a quick question. Cause I don't know if this is something Roger's still here. Um, Roger, you had proposed, so this is a, the update to the open space and recreation plan that's needed for the master plan. Um, it also is a requirement for grant funding. So Roger had made the recommendation that the town apply for an EEOA grant, I think Roger, to, um, wrap up the remaining master plan chapters and update whatever was necessary. Would this fall under that, Roger? Do you know?
I don't know. Um, I can ask Karen.
Yeah, because what I'm wondering is whether or not they would, if we got that grant, would the survey be paid for out of the grant?
When would we know if we got the grant?
I don't know. Roger brought it up, so.
It's the same one we, the town applied for last year or the year before that we didn't get.
That's right.
And their recommendation was to apply for it again this year in May.
Yeah, I, I'd love to know when we would find out, when, when would we, we know if we got it or not?
I, I can ask her what the, what the timeframes are for it.
So this expires in November, right?
We, we, yes, our deadline is November.
Okay, now there's plenty of other communities that have expired plans. Cause I went online and saw them. So tell us what the problem is, is if it expires, Lorraine.
Well, as you mentioned, there are other grants that are contingent upon an updated open space and recreation plan. And it was already late the last time. We'd like it to not be late again this time.
And if it's, if it's late, you know, it could be a little late, but not horribly late.
Horrible, right, right.
We don't want it a year.
Years later, yeah, the last one was, was years late.
Well, if I remember, it was updated in 2014, but the Board of Selectmen didn't approve it till 2017. So I don't know what the, the three-year delay was.
Well, while we're talking on that, then for round three of the DLTA.
That's gonna come up later, Roger.
Okay, um, but this.
Yeah, go ahead, Roger.
That could be, um, if we wanted to do another planning grant, we could do that if it's necessary, that chapter. I just don't know the timeframe for them completing the work. That's why she had recommended it as part of the remaining chapters rather than doing one a year. But if you want to, um, put that off and talk about it when you, when it comes up later, we could do that.
Yeah, because what I was wondering too with that, Roger, on that DLTA grant is because it's just an update and not a full-blown, could open space and recreation tap MRPC for just the things they need? Like the survey piece or the demographic information? You know, they, they want to retain, you know, a lot of the institutional knowledge that they have to update it. But certainly there's maps and demographics and survey that, that is part of the plan that needs to be updated. So, um, maybe it wouldn't be a full, uh.
Well, we, we can talk about it when it comes up later.
Okay, okay.
So for Lorraine's request, are we going to table that?
Well, I have a quick, I have a question, Lorraine. Actually, it's not a question, it's just a comment. So one of the things that troubles me about mailing surveys is most of them you're going to see in the trash can down at the post office. And it just seems like an awful lot of money to spend to have the vast majority of them thrown away. So are there other opportunities to, you know, place surveys? You know, like at the hardware store or the library or the public safety building where people could pick them up and fill them out? In, in would you get the same percentage of return doing that versus spending the 500 bucks and mailing them?
I'm not, I'm sure we can try, might be worth a try. We can maybe start early to do that. I don't know that I can answer the question.
Yeah, no, I, I, you really can't, you, you know, because you're guessing just like I am. But that's, you know, historically, that's what's happened with those paper surveys is that, you know, a very small percentage of them actually get returned and, you know, you kind of end up in the same place you were, so.
I've just always felt that everyone has a mailbox because everyone, the opportunity to participate in the process. If they choose to participate, good. If they don't, well, it wasn't for lack of them having an opportunity to do so. But we can think of alternative ways. Things we don't have a lot of time either, so.
Give it some thought and come back to our next meeting?
I'll do that.
Okay. Now we're going to move on to task list update. Do we have anything really pressing or in the interest of time, can we pass over this?
I, I'm okay with passing over it. There were a bunch of things that I added on to the list that I sent out to you today. You know, I, I would just ask, um, take a look at it. And if there's something there that's incorrect or something that needs to be added or changed, let me know and I'll just update it. And I mean, obviously there are some issues on there, things that we need to talk about, but probably not tonight.
Okay. So we'll pass over that. And now we come to grant update. And this is the spot where we can discuss the grants that we just started discussing. And we'll start with the, uh, the DLTA number three. And Roger had requested to update and improve the accuracy of the zoning map, not to make changes to it. And then you guys were just having some discussion on doing other things with it. So where do we go from here?
I think we had asked the board to give us other suggestions and we didn't have anything else. So, um, the need came up that the zoning map should be updated to be more accurate based on some, uh, base information. But if, and that's what the planning board voted on. But applications are due May 4th, so we still have some time if we want to reconsider. If you think the open space plan has a more immediate need related to other things, then we could discuss that again. The zoning map update would be part of their mapping department. So that would give us a shorter turnaround to get that done probably by the summer. Whereas open space plan would be their planning department. Um, and they've been backlogged. Uh, so I don't know what the timeframe would be on that. We could ask Karen and John if they think that's something that could get done in the timeframe you, you would want it. Or do we just do it as part of that other grant? So, um, we can, we got, you know, another, you've got another meeting, we got another meeting or two. It's not due till May 4th, so, um, if you want to hold off and reconsider, still time to do that.
Rosemarie, I didn't think to add on that.
Um, well, Brian already updated you on the mass development grant. Our consultants for LRRP, which is the Local Rapid Recovery Plan, uh, will be visiting on Wednesday.
But I mean, to what Roger just said.
Oh, the DLTA thing? No, I already put my two cents in earlier.
Okay, Bill?
I got nothing.
All right. So Roger, can you look into that with Karen then?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, and you're meeting again in a couple of weeks?
Yep, and we always put grant update on, on our agenda because there's, there's so many that are getting updated.
Yeah, so we'll, uh, we'll discuss it again next week.
I did have a question, though. I forgot to ask Brian. A regional inefficiency grant, what's it looking like?
Well, we've looked around. Most people have a planner or land use person full-time. The only one that kind of talked a little bit with us was Townsend, but didn't get real aggressive with it. We'll, you know, go back at them tomorrow, but you know, we looked around at a lot of communities and, um, unfortunately, they weren't interested in, in going that direction at all.
Well, it's due April 15th. That's why I asked. The clock's ticking, so. Yeah, maybe, maybe we do roll in with Townsend. I mean, it would help to pay for one year, the first year.
Right, the problem, I think, you know, towns, you know, they hadn't, they thought of it, but it wasn't really that much. Because the thing is, you own that person every year after that. You know, I think we're all, you know, you know, my, my point is how do you know what time they're working on and whatnot? How do you split the person? You know, you'd have to put ground rules. But yeah.
So part of the, part of the grant is that they, they actually help you do that.
I know, yeah. No, we can look more tomorrow and see if Townsend's more interested. Mary follow up tomorrow on that.
Thank you.
Do we have anything else grant related before we move on?
I do. I need a vote. So there's a Commonwealth Security Trust Fund Grant. It's new. So our police department, um, is going to put in for portable police radios. There's no match. They're going to put it in for just shy of $20,000. And that would help us kind of in our line items where we're looking at portable radios. So if we get the grant, it would assist with that line item.
Brian, what was that Commonwealth what?
No, it's the Commonwealth Security Trust Fund Grant.
So what do you need? A vote to authorize you to apply?
Correct.
Okay.
I, I had a quick question. So it's 20K. How much of the, does that pay for all the radios or just a portion of it?
They pay for the radios that they're putting in for. It was 15 radios. I think that's what they're looking for. Because there's 18 guys. I think they're looking to replace 15 of them. Maybe there's, maybe it's three short of what they could, but I think the, the thing was up to 20,000. So they start at 19, 19,00927 and 35 cents.
So I'll give you a motion, um, that the board vote to approve the Commonwealth or vote approve the application to the Commonwealth Security Trust Fund Grant for the purposes of replacing the portable radios for the police department.
I'll second that.
All in favor, Leo Jansen, yes?
Rosemarie Meister, yes.
Bill Johnson, yes.
Brian, didn't the fire department just get something similar?
The fire haven't just got their grant for radios also.
Okay.
No, and this is a new one by the police. This one, they, it hasn't been done before.
All right. Do we have anything else grant related before we move on?
Yeah, just a quick question, Brian. Have you heard anything on the community compact grants? Did you get the MOUs or anything like that? I, I thought we were supposed to get these MOUs that needed to be signed and we move forward. I just haven't heard anything on that.
So many grants. What, what, what were they for specifically?
It was for the land use regulation and the dense housing.
So we got both of those. That's the one for the 12,000 and the 33,000?
Yeah, yes, correct.
We did get both of those and they were signed. So I'm trying to use the $12,000 one to help with the bylaw process.
Right.
And the 33,000, uh, we haven't allocated that towards anything yet.
Yeah. Okay, I just wanted to make sure we got them.
Excellent. So now we're going to move on to approval of minutes. We have the minutes from the March 11th work session and the March 15th meeting.
I'll give you a motion to approve the minute meetings of Thursday, March 11th, 2021.
I'll second that.
All in favor, Leo Jansen, yes?
Rosemarie Meister, yes.
Bill Johnson, yes. And I'll follow that up with a motion to approve the minutes from Monday, March 15th, 2021.
I'll second that.
All in favor, Leo Jansen, yes?
Rosemarie Meister, yes.
Bill Johnson, yes.
Do we have any other business that, that I'm not aware of? Hearing none, we will go on to reminders.
Okay, reminders. Next Board of Selectmen's meeting will be Tuesday, April 20th, 2021 at 6:30 PM. And that will be a Zoom meeting. April 27th, 2021, the town elections will be held at JR Briggs Elementary School from 9:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Last day to register for that election is April 7th. Absentee and early voting applications are available online or at the town clerk's office. The annual town meeting is scheduled for May 4th, 2021 at 7:00 PM at Oakmont Regional High School. Dog licenses are due May 31st to avoid any late fees. And, uh, town clerk is asking that you return your census forms as soon as possible to town clerk's office. And as was discussed earlier tonight, there's going to be a townwide cleanup on Saturday, April 24th. And, um, you can go on the, um, on Facebook. I'm sure there'll be something on the town's website as well, uh, talking about that effort. Mr. Chair.
I think, I think I've got an updated copy of the agenda. Next Board of Selectmen work session will be Friday, April 9th at 9:00 AM in the Public Safety Building in the training room.
Well, this is, this, I've got the agenda that's on OneDrive.
I got mine, but I had to look for it in a couple of places.
Yeah, so we need to, we need to do something about that anyway. Uh, Mr. Chairman, will you take another motion?
I sure will.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
All in favor, Leo Jansen, yes?
Rosemarie Meister, yes.
Bill Johnson, yes.
All right.
Good night.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, have a good night.
You too.